Probably go, he's like, I could be there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's get a little harder.
Mm-hmm.
A bit more embarrassing.
Yes, no, I'm with you, it's, didn't you ever know if we're gonna have? Okay, I just sent it to your email, it's just a minute to get through our filter, but you should have it in just a second.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anytime.
Help me.
I brought my flash drive, are you gonna help, um, Crystal with what I need for close sessions?
I can.
Okay.
Um.
Are you staying? For a second?
I will be here, yes, for the whole night, yes.
Um. Flash drive, what we, some of what we're talking about in close session, um, is, um, performance evaluation. And so we've been, we can't, um, oh my god, the meeting for a short moment. So I can't, um, can't even, so, yeah, so, I brought my flash drive, and so you guys can.
Yep.
We'll get to square one, we'll have it completely ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The August twenty twenty-two regular meet, regular meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Good afternoon, Ms. Craybill.
Here.
Ms. Walker. Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Bullier. Ms. Justice.
Here.
Mr. McManus.
Present.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Also present.
Okay, um, so again, welcome to the meeting of New Hanover County Boards of Education for August. Thank you all for being with us in person or in the remote viewing audience. We value and appreciate your participation, your interest, and your advocacy on behalf of the students and staff. I ask that each of us do our part to contribute to a successful and non-stressful meeting by treating each other with dignity and respect throughout. No matter what your thoughts or feelings are about an issue or even a particular group, so that the board can remain focused on completing the governance work so necessary for our students and staff to be successful. I just wanted to call your attention that, um, on the agenda, you will see estimated times for each topic. As a courtesy to and a respect for the time of my fellow board members, the New Hanover County staff that is joining us, and to the community at large, I intend to stick as closely as possible to these estimated times to keep our discussion focused and on point. So that being said, um, moving into our first agenda item, and that is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay. Um, is there a second? Okay, um, I have, um, is there somebody in the audience with us? Okay, um, I need to, um, the, make one adjustment to the agenda, if I may. I'd like to add item D under information, classified recognition program to be presented by Dr. Barnes. So I'm making that motion, is it, an amended motion to that motion.
Move to approve.
I'd like to also make an amendment, uh, I'd like to see if we could add.
Pete, 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 we're gonna do one at a time.
Okay.
We're gonna do one at a time.
Well.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say, uh, any discussion about the amended?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes, um, Chairman, I'd like to see if we could add just at least an informational item about the, uh, call for, um, where we're at on that whole question.
I didn't get that, uh, uh, information on what?
Uh, on seclusion rooms.
Update. Update?
Seclusion room.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, I'm not quite clear, just, is this an inform, I think he's, what he's saying is an information.
He wants to add an information session.
Okay.
Um, I'm guessing item now E.
Okay, all right, I, well, there's people here I know that are interested, and I think it'd be a good idea to do that. That's my opinion, we've got everybody here.
Okay, um, so I'd like to just toss in there that, number one, we weren't prepared for that, you know, with our senior staff to give any updates, and not certain if there are any updates, but I also wanted to just remind the rest of the board that we already have talked about this at several opportunities, and we agreed at that point that we were gonna wait until after the September meeting, so that the schools had a chance to review their, um, their discipline plans, and, um, update their school improvement plans, and then, and have those reviewed before we voted on that, so that is my thoughts. Ms. Adams, do you have anything? Okay, Mr. McManus?
Yes. I'm fine with it.
You're fine with what?
Whatever you said.
Okay, all right, so, um, let's go ahead, um, and just take a vote on that. Uh, Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Oh, the motion is to add seclusion, um, discussion of seclusion and restraints to the agenda. Yes.
Dr. Barnes, are you prepared to do that?
Um, I, I can provide the same information that I provided before, but I have not, the schools haven't provided their school improvement plans or their school plan for the management of student behavior yet. Right.
Thank you, all right, Ms. Bowie.
I guess my question was, I thought the idea was we were gonna wait until after, uh, Ms. Barnes spoke with the principals, which she has done at this point, so I just wanted to hear maybe what their, their recounting was, or where they're, you know, how that meeting went, where we're at, you know, so I think we do have an update.
I can tell you that I was at the, one of the sessions, and it was basically informational, and they went through scenarios, and they talked about it, and she told them exactly what she told us, that, um, she's expecting them to review their discipline plans and include it in the school improvement plans. So there really wasn't any discussion that I heard where people were pushing back or saying yay. Okay, all right, so Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Justice.
Um, yes.
Mr. McManus.
I'm not sure.
Ms. Craybill.
No.
Ms. Adams.
No.
Okay, so we won't be adding that. Okay, so now we are at, back to the original motion to, um, accept the agenda as amended. Um, so we've already had a first and a second, so, um, Ms., uh, all in, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, great, so we have that. All right, so next up on our agenda is our invocation. The, um, the Associate Pastor from Bright School Beach Methodist Church, Reverend Julia Hayes, will provide our invocation, so go ahead and step forward. Will everyone please stand?
Thank you so much for the privilege of getting to be here and, uh, leading us in prayer in this time. Will you join me now in prayer? Holy and loving God, I thank you for each and every person in this room. I thank you for the call that you've placed on their life to be deeply involved in the education of our young people. Lord, as they gather today to discuss future plans, would your Spirit of peace be among them? Would you grant them vision and clarity? Would you give them eyes to see the path that you are calling them towards? And Lord, would you keep us always mindful of the least, the last, and the lost among us, that your justice would be done particularly for these children? We love you, and it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we have our national anthem, and, um, I just wanted to say to folks that, um, it is my goal to have a national anthem presentation at every one of our board meetings, whether it be live or recorded, and so tonight, we will, um, have a recording. Thank you to the Communications Department for calling through our archives. Oh, say, can you see by the dancin' lily light? So proudly we hail at the twilight's light. Crossed through the dark night star to the best part for the people that we want. We're so glad to be here. And the rocket's red glare, the bats bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does the stars sing the day and way? For the land of the blue and the home of the brave. So I don't know who that was, but do you know who that was, Aiden? Singing?
I do.
Okay, yes.
Emily Lane.
Okay, thank you, Emily Lane from New Hanover High School, did an excellent job. Okay, will you please join me in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone may be seated. So, um, ooh, I thought we had made this change, but, um, I guess since we didn't get it in writing, I'll go ahead and do it out loud. The next up on our agenda, um, I would like to switch recognitions and introductions with the work session. So, um, I'm making that motion. Is there a second to switch that?
Okay.
So that recognitions can go now instead of the work. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, my, I just did an update. All right, so, all right, so now we are ready to do recognitions. Um, Russell, would you like to come forward first?
Good evening. Tonight, New Hanover County Schools is proud to recognize New Hanover High School alumni, Aiden Payne, as the Gatorade North Carolina Boys Soccer Player of the Year. Aiden, who was a forward on the team, helped the Wildcats make history when they won the first-ever boys soccer state championship last fall. Throughout the season, Aiden scored fifty-four goals and had eleven assists, including two goals in the state final, leading him to Most Valuable Player honors. He also scored all four goals in the state semifinal. Aiden was named N C Soccer Coaches Association Player of the Year and was named to the United Soccer Coaches All-American Selection. He is also a finalist for the Boys Soccer Player of the Year at the High School OT Honors and was named to the High School OT All-State Team. He is committed to playing at N C State this fall. Let's give it up for Aiden.
Yay, yeah, it should, yeah. Congratulations family, too.
This is for the sister.
Right.
Okay, um, next up is administrative, um, recognitions introductions, Dr. Barnes.
I'd like to bring in my, my physical replacement here, uh, Jennifer Geller, there she is.
I was gonna say, Dr. Barnes looks a lot like Jen Geller tonight, so.
Yeah, thank you. We'll take you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, it is my pleasure, one of my most favorite parts of my job, um, is the hiring aspect and bringing excellent talent here to the division. And while we would love to, um, introduce all of the staff that we bring to the division, we are assured that at their school-based, um, faculty meetings, those introductions will be made for, um, school-based and department-based, um, positions. So tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing administrative positions, um, those that serve the entire division. Um, so first, I have, um, Mr. Benjamin Horn. Um, his career started out as an exceptional children's teacher, um, and then moved on, um, with his experience in other leadership positions, such as a Director of Athletics, Dean of Students, Coordinator of Student Support. Um, is now currently serving as an AP in Pender County. Um, he is from Wilmington here, so we're happy to have him back as the AP at Hoggard. So, join me in welcoming Mr. Horn.
Thank you for making the trip across the border, we're, we're rocking you with open arms.
Uh, we also have Mr. Stanley that is here this evening. He is our new Executive Director of Finance, and I know the Finance Department is extremely excited to have him joining the team. Um, he'll be starting mid-August. And Mr. Stanley's career, um, he has served as a Chief Financial, Chief Financial Officer, um, in Whiteville, as well as the Vice President for Finance and Administration with Bladen Community College. Um, and you may also know his wife that works here in the division as well, Ms. Amy Stanley in Child Nutrition. So we are excited to welcome Mr. Stanley as well. Thank you.
Thank you both, welcome to the team.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So next on our agenda is the Board Work Sessions. So I have, um, Mr. McManus, did you pass those?
I did.
Okay, and I have each one of you to get one of these sheets, too. And then, um,
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Adams, this is for you. And, did you bring? No, okay, okay, and so, Dr. Faust, that's for you. Okay, so, um, we talked about this at the, um, at the Policy Committee meeting and ran out of time, so, um, we just thought that I would just bring it for a work session, because this is one of those ones that we really have to get done. So I do need your input so that, um, I can take it back to the Policy Committee, you know, for their input, you know, once more to kind of follow our procedure. So, um, those of you who are, um, watching online, um, Pete in particular, if you, um, the, the policy that we're looking at is the one that we looked at in the Policy Committee, so if you pull up Symbli, you should be able to follow along with, with the document that I'm using. Okay? Okay, all right, so, um, I brought this up, Ms. Adams gave me the opportunity about a year and a half ago to bring this up, and we never were able to get past, you know, looking at these policies, I mean, looking at these committees, but it, it's time that we have to, and we are gonna stick with this until we get her done. So, starting a new year, and I thought that would be a good opportunity. So, one of the, one of the main reasons for doing this, number one, is that our Board Committee policy is sorely outdated. Um, and if you go on to the, our website, and you look up, um, under, under Board of Education and Committees, and click on that icon, um, could we just pull this one down for just a minute and show us that? So the audience, if they want to follow along, they can see that, too, because it's kind of hard to have two up at one time. Um, Committees. No, Committees. There you go. So if you look at the list that, that, um, Anita, Ms. Baggy's gonna scroll down for us, this list, and, um, doesn't match up with our Board Policy. And then, if you, as she's scrolling and looking, we'll go back up, but you saw on the left-hand side, there is a list of those Committees, and even, there's an even, there's a disconnect between some of the Committees on the left and some of the Committees on the list. So we have to have something that is accurate for board purposes and for our community purposes. Um, and this will be especially important as the year rolls in, and we are looking to have members of our community and staff, um, on these Committees. So they're, they're gonna need to wanna know, you know, what they're doing and what they're responsible for. Ms. Justice?
Yes. Is there another way to view that besides up there? Because none of the handouts are on the.
That's why I'm having her put it up here, because the, you don't have a handout for it.
Well, I can't see it either.
You can pull it up on the website.
Yeah, pull it up on your computer.
Where? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
She just followed, she just walked you through, if you go to Board, and then you click on, um.
Because I had done that already, and it, it did not pop up.
All right, we'll give you a minute.
None of those are there.
Now she wants to see this page.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, while she's pulling that up, um, I, I will go ahead and get started on, um, the, all right, so you can go ahead and just save that page and then come back to it for us. Do you have it, Ms. Justice?
Uh, I mean, did you go all the way back to the, to the Board Policy side and then go from there?
It's not on the Board Sol, Policy side, Judy, it's right here. Thank you, Ms. Baggy. Okay, um, yeah, I wanna, thank you again for filling in for our, um, our technology team, too, because Anita is a, is an alumni at that seat, and we're, we welcome you back. The, um, all right, so, if you, if we are, if you could pull me back, Anita, for the, for the audience to see, the, um, twenty-two thirty, the policy that you had up, there you go. All right, so, um, if you scroll down in there, I don't see that the one that we have up has, does it have red lines? And my glasses just can't see that? No, okay, so on, on, Board Members on your page, the, um, second paragraph, oh, the, the Policy Committee said we're gonna strike that. The, um, I had added in there on the second line where it says that the Chairperson of the Board on an annual basis names the people, and I had added in there for clarity, can be changed if necessary by the Chair at any time during the year. Um, the Policy Committee felt that, um, that was implied, um, Board Chair option, so we are gonna take that writing out so that we are not redundant, so go ahead and strike that out. Um, in the third paragraph, about one, two, three, the fourth line down where it says the Superintendent or Designee, and I put in parentheses there, um, and this is my suggestions, this isn't, um, the rule, District Subject Matter Expert, um, in parentheses, so that we are clear that who is responsible, um, for what on each of the Committees. The, whether it be a Board Member, um, or a District Person. But even if it is a Board Member, the District Person will always have a, the, the Board Member will always have a District Subject Matter Expert, um, on their team. Then if you move down to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the seventh line, um, in that same paragraph, where ensuring accurate and timely information is available to the Committee during its deliberation of issues, and then adding the sentence where it says Subcommittee's may be formed to enhance and expedite the work of the Committee. Okay, so now we're moving down into, um, the first Committee as part of the Policy, the Budget Development Committee. And so now, this is where I need, um, Ms. Baggy to go back to the other page that we were just on, and click on Budget Development Committee. So, at one point, um, when, at, at some point, and I don't know when, we switched, um, from this definition of our budget to mount, could you hold, Ms. Justice?
I was gonna tell you when.
Huh?
I was on the board when that happened.
When did that happen?
That happened, I think, it's two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
I did it with a better idea to have meetings ahead of time and the whole board involved.
Okay, so this up, and but it, it was never changed, you know, since two thousand nineteen, because it says right here that the Board Development Committee is made up of, um, three Board Members to start with, and, um, that who, um, one, the, three Board Members, one who will be the Chair of that, and, um, an administrative person from the school district, obviously, Dr. Faust, and, um, the Finance Team. And so this Committee will work together, starting in December, January, and February, to start talking about the budget and, um, getting some things together and preparing some of the Board Members to know a little bit more and to help with the discussion, um, on that. So when I saw that, that was, you know, that was a major difference. Um, but it also says over here on the right, that Budget Development Committee, Board Members, Entire Board. So we've got two conflicting things on the same page. And, um, so I did some research, and there are a number of other districts, including the large ones, like, you know, Wake and, um, Charlotte Mac, that they have smaller budget Committees, um, to, Budget Development Committees to get the conversation started. So I, we need to decide if that is something that we want to do, um, the, or if we want to keep it as the whole Budget Committee, the whole, the whole Committee, and then we will probably need some parameters around that, so, Ms. Adams?
Um, to Ms. Justice's point, in two thousand nineteen, because we had four new members that came on, that was the rationale for making it a full Board Committee. I think that with the, the turnover on the Board, that potentially you could have new, four new members again this year, I think that keeping it as is with the entire Board for twenty-two thirty is.
As is waiter.
Not on the website, as in the policy, as it stood in front of us. My personal opinion is that I think that that is the best way to do it, because it keeps everyone involved in the process.
Okay, because it looks like this, this policy was changed in two thousand twenty, not in two thousand nineteen. Okay, uh, Ms. Justice?
I, I guess, there is sort of confusion. I thought this is what the purpose of the, um, the Policy Committee was, was to talk on this. I'm not sure why we're up here doing this, was that something, this conversation should be done on the Policy Committee?
Okay, so Judy, I explained, um, when I first opened up the conversation. No, I did, I said, the Policy Committee, and Mr. Wildebohr was a part of it, um, we decided, because we didn't get through it, to have a work session, take the work from the Policy to the work session, get feedback, and then go back to the Policy Committee so that we could have input from senior staff. So we did go to Policy first. No, senior staff has read it, and it was not their request. It was, it was, um, Nelson and Pete's and my request to take it to a work session so we could have this dialogue. So if you're not interested in having the dialogue, then you can just listen.
Well, it sounds like this is something that they would be doing to a policy.
We did, we got started, and we recommended that it come back to, um, the work session. So if you, if you watched the, the meeting, you can watch it, and you can see that we did that.
And if I, yeah, I, I don't, I can't hear you guys real well, so hopefully I'm not jumping in wrong time. We wanted to get everybody's. We wanted to get everybody's input on this, because it is such an important topic, and also, if, we also talked about how to form the Committees, being a part of that discussion.
Pete, I didn't hear what you said. You're going to have to go to a different room, or put headphones in or something.
Okay, I'll try again.
Thank you.
Basically, I just wanted to echo that we did decide to bring it back to the whole Board, to get input, because it is such an important topic. Secondly, we also even talked about, in that first paragraph, we kind of skimmed over that real quickly, but in the first paragraph of the overall overarching policy, because there are so many people that wonder, how can I get on a Board Committee? And it says there that it's made up by the Chair, obviously I'd like to discuss that, and also, you know, have a set way, you know, it happens every year, how long, you know, there's so many variables that we don't, it's just kind of left out there in Never Neverland. We really need to have a firm understanding on how somebody can try to get on a Board, is it, what it says right there is, it's only the Chairperson that makes up, not only the Chairperson or Chair, you know, the Chairperson, but also makes up the entire Committee.
Okay, so Pete, Mr. Bodenborg?
Yeah, but that's another topic, I know, before you tell me.
Can you hold that thought until we get to it? We're talking about just the Budget Committee right now. Hold your thought, because it's important. All right, so, any more discussion on that, from those of us sitting up here, about the recommendation to, for the Policy?
Well, it obviously needs to be put in one form, and not two different, yeah, well, that part's true.
No, what is your thoughts on entire Board versus three-member Subcommittee?
Well, obviously, it's a good idea, but when we started, and she said we're going to possibly have four new members, two, one, but no matter what, it's good to have everybody always to be kept updated.
Okay, so you're saying, yes, you'd like to stay with the Policy as it's, the wording as it's in the Policy?
Right, and whoever, yeah, we should have handled this earlier, so it's good that it's done now.
I know, we've tried. Mr. McManus, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I agree, you should be over there.
Okay, then we'll leave it at that. All right, let's move on to the next one. And these, what we're going through right now, I apologize, I skipped ahead, these are our standing Committees. These are the ones that, so we would need to, in the budget, we would have to put in there some wording, and we can get to that from Policy, about, you know, how often they meet, what do you want to do, that kind of stuff. So, I'll look to you, and you, Dr. Faust, and Ms. Sutton and her team, to come up with that. All right, so Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee, that one seems to be, you know, that one is actually one of the ones that is very well-defined, and if you see, if you see on some of the, could you flip back, Ms. Baggy, to the, and click on the Equity Diversity Inclusion Committee? So, on this one, you can see that we have all the members who are on the team, we have the, we don't have a Subject Matter Expert listed, but we have the members of the team, and so that is one of the things like Mr. Wilderbor had brought up, is that we, the goal of this, not even an exercise, but is not only to make sure we have the right Committees, but to have the same kind of information to support each Committee up there. So, I didn't have any changes on the wording for the EDI Committee, but right now, the Subject Matter Expert of that is our Title IX Coordinator, no, it's not, it's, it would be our Chief Equity Officer. So, that is who the Subject Matter Expert is for that. Okay, so next, on the, on the standing Committees is the Family Communications Committee. And I was recommending, proposing that after consultation with the Communications Department, the, and Ms. Adams, who was also on that Committee, that we disband this Committee, and use the, and the Superintendent would create a Parent Advisory Committee. And hopefully, with a representative, we don't have to legislate that, but with the, unless we want to, with a representative from each school on that Committee. So, this, this one would not be, would not be necessarily Community, it's kind of like the School Improvement Team, where you must have a kid in school to be a true parent, you know, to be on the Parent Advisory. So, that is what that recommendation was. So, Ms. Justice?
I think it's an awful recommendation. I wish more people would participate in the Family Communication Committee, and we do need to push that more, but we don't need a Advisory Committee set up by us, we need people in the community to come out and be involved. I, you know, we have a tendency, and this is some of the complaints I get from the public a lot, that we control too much information. Well, this should be information that we, that the parents almost control when you do this Committee. I like the way that the first, the Equity Committee's page was set up, I like the way this Committee's page is set up, you ask for feedback, and I think we should do this with all of them. But as far as turning, totally changing the Family Communications Committee, that's, that's a step too far, in my opinion, to have another Advisory Committee, that's, you know, Advisory Committees are good, but this is actually Family Communications Committee for the whole district.
Yeah, Ms. Adams, would you, since you started the Committee, would you weigh in on the wording there too?
Sure, I'll provide some context too. I mean, originally, when the Family Communications Committee was created, it was because communications within the district was minimal, and the purpose of it was to speak with our families, to find out, are you getting the information that you need? How are you getting it? How would you prefer to get it? And we were very active for the first year, meeting regularly, we had town, not town halls, but we had roundtable discussions with a lot of people in the community, and it was fantastic, and thank you very much to all of those that served on the Committee. We had teachers, administrators, and we had parents from, representing from all over the county. However, when Mr. Smith and his team began reaching out more, and creating a very streamlined communications plan, I feel that that Committee has become obsolete, because they are getting a lot of the feedback, they are requesting to find out, how do families want to be communicated with, and they've made a lot of improvements. One of those, for instance, you know, one of the issues was that for our non-English-speaking families, how were they getting information? And it wasn't getting to them the way that they needed it. That's something that they have answered, they have addressed, and we have strategies in place. So, I'm with Ms. Crable, you know, I feel that this Committee, it took a lot of time, but it was also because we didn't have the outreach that we have now. And so, my hat's off to the Communications Department, you guys have done an incredible job, so I, I'm supportive of...
Well, this, this Committee is more than just giving parents information, it's also to get feedback as, from the community to us aboard, and to filter it through the PR Department. You know, they're, they're good at communication, that's, that's why they're there, but this is a different kind of communication. This is a family communication with us, and that's who should, like, as you said, the first year was good, and it can be good again, and I don't, and I know that the energy has changed, because things have changed, but we can get back to that, and we need to get input from the community. People can come up here and speak to call to the audience, we can get emails, we can get phone calls, we can get texts, we can meet people in person, but to have a group together and get feedback from other members of the community is a very healthy way to understand what's going on in our schools. And the Advisory Board, that's too structured, I mean, we need to have, we need to have people feel comfortable, and do things in such a way that's really representing our community, that, so that's to me what it is.
Okay, so, I'm just going to let Ms. Adams go, and I'll, go ahead, and I'll make my comments.
I would just, my only response to that, you know, I think that with Dr. Faust's Advisory Committees that he has implemented, that's one aspect, but the other is, we're doing town halls now too, so we do have a direct line to our community, so.
Was it twice a year?
And then also, too...
Four town halls?
We have three public participation meetings that are required per our Policy, 2310, and we committed to that, and we've started with number one.
Okay.
And so, we're on that. So, my suggestion to you would be, if you want a, if you want this Committee to stay, then you'll need to help write some of the goals, because the goals of this Committee are not good, they are not accurate, and so, we, if you want the community involved, then that would be a different kind of Committee. So, submit that to Nelson, and we will talk about it, he's the Policy Committee Chair, submit it to Nelson, or you can tell me, or you could tell Pete, and then they can bring it back up. But that's where we are on this one.
Well, my concern is, this is the first I heard that there was a problem with the goals, etc.
It's not a problem, it's just we're updating.
You just said it. Well, yeah, the update is good, but this is, this is just the first I've heard. It would've been nice if I'd known, or we'd known about it earlier.
Well, this was posted, so we could, it was on Symbly.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about, you just said the goals were bad, I'm just...
They're not bad, they're just, we've met them, we've met them, and we do not need to keep working on the same goals. All right, though, your point is noted, and we will talk about that at Policy. Next, number four, Student Scholarships for Future Teacher Committee. In there, on the second line, about halfway through, when it says four New Hanover County High School seniors annually, I had originally suggested at least four, and then it was recommended that we take out a number, because we don't know what budgetary restrictions we'll have. So, that we will have scholarships, but not to limit us on the number, so, I mean, is that okay with everyone?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. Okay, and we can always go back and revisit, you know, at a later time. And then, so, it's still, and then in the second paragraph, instead of calling Ms. Bowie, our Administrative Assistant to the Board, I wanted to call her the Board Clerk, because that's what many, many other school districts call, the Administrative Assistant to the Board. Is that appropriate, or, okay, okay. Thank you for, thank you for the head nod. Was somebody talking?
Pete, I think I heard...
I said that was fine, that was good.
Okay, all right, so next, we're on to the Policy Committee. That one I had no changes on, three Board Members there, and it, you know, it fits right in, we're following it, we're doing it. Next, number six, the Legislative Committee. This is one that we voted on, actually, a year ago, and never got it put into Policy, and so I'll just read it out loud, that the purpose of this Committee is to serve as a liaison between the Board of Education and local and state elected officials, so as to enhance their awareness of issues as they pertain to our local public education system. The Committee will be comprised of three Board Members, preferably one from each party. One Board Member on this Committee will also serve as the Board's Liaison to the NCS School Boards Association per Policy 2650, liaison with the School Boards Association, and will follow the NCSBA Legislative and other activities, and report highlights to the entire Board. So, right now, per Policy 2650, we do have a person, one person selected to do that, but their only thing is to attend NCSBA meetings, so this is broadening the scope of that work, and encouraging more dialogue with our local and state elected officials.
Are you, are you proposing that, yes, matching up the Policy, but when do you see enacting this Committee? Does it make sense to wait until after the election at this point?
Probably, I mean, it doesn't mean that we have to do it like tomorrow, and I mean, we could wait till the new Board Chair, you know, gets in place, or I could, I could attempt to start it now, but we, that's a good point, we can talk about that. Okay, yes.
Okay. This Committee was formed back, was it in January?
Of last year, I think, it wasn't January of this year, it was a long time, it was when, it was when I first brought it up, at our, at a Board Meeting work session.
And I actually think that I asked to be on it, and I wasn't.
You are, you're named to it, your name is on the list.
Well, who's the Chair?
Back, we did not adopt this as a Policy, we did not adopt this officially on the Policy. You are the NCSBA Legislative.
So, so this, this has been sitting there a long time. I'm glad to hear about it, and this is very important, and I think, in my opinion, we shouldn't wait for elections to start moving this, because we need to talk with these government officials at all levels, this is where we get so much of our, everything. So, yes, I think it's a good idea, the sooner the better.
Well, we can talk about when we enact it, but we, right now, we just have to kind of get consensus to approve it. Okay, the next one is the Title IX Committee, and so that one, unfortunately, that one doesn't have, you know, oh, here it is. This Committee works with the Superintendent and the staff, and is comprised of two Board Members, and I added at the end, it, what it says, as well as staff and community members, to ensure that students are not denied equal access to educational programming and opportunities on the basis of sex. So, that is the only thing that we need to add there. If you look back, you don't have to switch back, Ms. Baggy, but if you look back on the page that we've been looking at, and click on the Title IX Committee, that one also is pretty robust in its explanation of the work, and that one is also on the front page of our website. So, we'll, we'll be looking about how, when we get this finalized, on how we advertise this a little bit more. All right, so those are our only standing Committees that we have right now. So, next would be the Board Advisory Committees, and I, the first line, I inserted, the Superintendent and the Board will also form Advisory Committees for specific purposes, to be chaired by New Hanover County Schools staff. And that was always a little bit of a sticking point, we weren't, there was always like a little bit of a gray line on who was in charge of that. So, that is where the New Hanover County Schools staff means the Subject Matter Expert. The Board Member, the next sentence, the Board Member does not serve as Chair of the Board Advisory Committees. And then the last line, where it says, the, the assignment of the individual Board Members to these Committees will be published each year, and can be changed by the Chair during the year. So, I'm going to take that one out, because we already said through implication that the Board Chair has that authority to do that, so we can take off that last line. So, now we've come through here, and we're looking, and these ones are not, Ms. Baggy, could you go back to that page? I just want to look at something real quick. Yes, I mainly want to look at the, the things on the left. All right, I'm going to be, I'm going to finish this up real quick. Is, is the Advisory Council for Exceptional Students listed up there? Yes, okay. So, these, these Committees that we're going through right now are also listed on the left-hand side, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Students. The only thing we have down there is in the second paragraph, it says comprised of a Board Member, I changed A to one, so we would be specific, and when I looked at their, their bylaws, or their standing notes, the last sentence on there says attendance is mandatory to remain on the Council. So, they had a requirement of that, so I thought that we should put that in the Policy. Calendar Committee doesn't change, we have two representatives, no, we don't, we have one Board Member on that. Number three, I'm adding in, and it says, we're not even looking at the same one, in number, the, I, yes.
Okay. This right now is because you're going to take this back to the Policy Committee, and have corrected what you're going over right now. You zoomed through there, ACES, and we've done this several times, over the last couple years, we changed, we took the ACES off, although people keep referring to it, because of its association with other term, acronyms with ACES, so we were calling, you know, we decided as a group, I think it was the year before last, the Advisory Committee decided to be called the Advisory Council of Exceptional Students, because ACES has got it actually very big.
So, we're just taking, is the, and I'll, I'll make sure we bring that up, so that the, Julie, can you just add in on that? Is that accurate? Or do you want to wait until Policy? Wait till Policy, okay. I have that circled, but we can come back to a Policy.
If, if that's possible, because I have more...
Yes, we can do that, not a problem. Okay, so, number three is, yeah, is supposed to be, it will be, they, I added in the CTE Business Advisory Council, as an advisory team, and that is basically Policy 2670, that we'll be going over later on that, and that is going to be replacing the CTEC Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee, which we'll get to on the, on the last piece of paper. Okay, so Educator of the Year Committee, that one stands, the Gifted Advisory Council, that one's good, again, in one of the places, it said a member, but it should be one member. The, I added another one in there, the School Health Advisory Council, called SHAC, and I listed in there, I'll just read, the Board maintains the School Health Advisory Council to help plan, update, implement, promote, and monitor Policy 6140, student wellness, as well as to address other health and nutrition issues within the school system. The Council serves as an advisory committee regarding student health issues, and works in conjunction with the District Wellness Coordinator, to coordinate the school system's efforts to promote student and employee health and wellness in compliance with state and federal requirements. I just lifted that straight out of the SHAC wording, so that we don't have, again, a conflict of wording. The Council must include, and this also is part of the requirement, that the Council must include each member of the following groups, one, a School Board Member, and we're going to put one, school system administrators, school system food service representatives, physical education teachers, school health professionals, students, parents, guardians, and the public. So, we will, we will talk about that again in Policy, but that is, that's required. And then I took the opportunity there to just put in student voice, I didn't know how we wanted to do that, but it looks like in the Policy that they're suggesting, they want to have some sort of advisory team, but we don't have to talk about that right this moment, I just put that in there, so that we could be thinking about how we want our student voice to be, you know, in addition to what they're presenting, you know, we're going to have to make some sort of decision. So, that is there, kind of as a placeholder, so that we don't forget that we want our students involved. Next, letter C, Ad-Hoc Committees, and what you have in front of you is another list of the Ad-Hoc Committees, and Ad-Hoc Committees are not required as part of our Policy, but I did make a, one line on there that said the Board Clerk will maintain a list of Ad-Hoc Committees. And you can find the Ad-Hoc Committees on... And you can find the ad hoc committees on the, that, that page we were just on. And so I put it all into a spreadsheet, and so that we could keep track of the ad hoc committees that we formed. Hold on just one sec. The ad hoc committees, can you, the, she's going to scroll down to it. Board committees, keep rolling, keep rolling. Is that them? Are those the ad hocs that we just scrolled by? Okay. So you can see right there. So we've got the bond committee. We really only have that when we have bonds, so we would keep, that is an ad hoc committee. Capital, yes, ma'am?
Excuse me. Okay. Because I am looking at this out of the, our website, and we have the Board of Education representatives and the different committees.
I skipped that for right now.
Well, okay.
Can, can we go in the order that I, that's in the policy recommendations? Hold that thought. We're going to get to it.
Okay. Because a whole bunch of this stuff skipped.
Hold on. All right. So the ad hoc committees we have up there, and the capital request, that's really not a committee. It's, we, we appoint a board member to that, but we can, we can make that a committee if we want it to be. That will be talked about in policy. The dress code committee, that was one, that was, oh, the board meetings and agenda committee, we had on here ad hoc, and that was, that was dissolved. The dress code committee has dissolved. And then I am recommending to the policy committee that we dissolve the Isaac Bear Building Ad hoc Committee, because we are at a place now that the school system can take the, can take the, the, take the reins and the lead on what that looks like. So, and then, so the NCSB Legislative Committee, we were going to merge, I was going to merge that into the Legislative Services, so that we get that taken care of. And then CTEC requested that this committee be resolved, dissolved, and included in the, the committee that I, I suggested to you called the, the CTE advisory. So those are all things that we, that the policy committee just wanted you to weigh in on. So does anybody have any comments about the ad hoc committees that we have?
So you're going to go back up in a minute.
Do we have any comments on the ad hoc committees?
Yes. No, well, yeah, you dissolved, yeah. You said that the dress code committee was dissolved, and that was all over the place here. Okay. Good. All right.
No, okay. So now, so we got that one. So next up is the Board Appointments to Outside Committees. And that was not part of this original policy, but I added that in so that we had a way to officially tie in policy 2660. And the wording there is, "The Board of Education is often asked to appoint one of its members or designate to an outside committee, commission, or board to provide input on behalf of New Hanover County Schools. This will be done in accordance with policy 2660, Board Appointments to Outside Committees." We will be talking about that committee later on the agenda tonight. Then, letter E, is, to Mr. Wilderboor's point, is that all board standing and advisory committees will have a chair, take review and approve minutes or a group memory, have a clear mission and goals, determine member length, recruit and maintain a diverse committee membership using a common membership application and recruiting time window, and periodically report progress to the entire board. We do have a section on our, a standing section on our agenda for committee reports, but we never have any. So that's one thing I wanted to try and bring forth. I didn't think that we needed as part of policy what that standard application looked like. The, unless, you know, that we, unless the policy committee brought that forward. And my plan also was to, after this is adopted, was to bring together all of the subject matter experts for all of our committees and talk about what that looks like, so that we, it's not, the, the application is not being made in a vacuum. It's being made with input from all the different committees with that. And then finally, hold on one sec. And then finally, the last one was the open meetings laws. Basically, I just put all standing committees of the board and subcommittees formed within our public bodies. So, Ms. Justice.
All right. So we're going over this now. You listened to suggestions.
Yes.
Now it's going back to policy.
Going back to policy. This was just for you to have, to give me some input. Mr. Wilderboor has heard the input. I've heard the input. We will talk about this at the policy committee in August, which is next week. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So that is a wrap on the, the work session. Thank you for going through that with me, because this is one of those ones, as everybody has said, it's long overdue. Okay. So now, next on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
First, I'll begin with a few budget updates. Ashley, of course, will go into more detail during her presentation, but I want to highlight some significant increases that our employees will see due to this year's budget. You can see, and they will see, the average salaries for some of our classified employees is well over $15 an hour. The state mandated a 4% raise or $15 per hour, but in many cases, we far exceeded that mandate, with some positions seeing well over 15, I'm sorry, well over 10%. These pay scales will be backdated until Ju- July 1st, of course, upon board approval. I want to ensure that our employees understand they'll see these changes, starting with this month's paycheck, of course, again, after the board has the opportunity to vote on the budget this evening. Slide, the next slide. Once again, I'm happy to report that we continue to fill vacancies at an incredible rate, and we will be among the most prepared in the state to start school later this month. One of the things, I was at a, at a conference Thursday and Friday with the Big 12, and so those are the, the school districts that have 25,000 plus. And a lot of those school districts have well over 200 vacancies that are open right now. And so just a big shout out to all of our hiring managers, our, anyone who was processing applications, who was processing those vacancies and making sure that individuals were getting what they needed. We now have 25 schools with zero teacher vacancies and only 32 teacher vacancies out of 2,195 certified staff positions. With recommendations, of course, there'll be more recommendations in the personnel file that you'll, you'll see later. Both Cottington and Eden opened their schools this year with zero teacher vacancies, and we are working closely to close out any vacancies for Snipes and Freeman, for which they will open next week. This concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So next up is the Board Chair Report. First and foremost, I want to say, I want to say, let's go. Let's roll. Let's be ready to go on August the 29th, that our staff and our students for traditional schools will all be coming back to school. And right now, we have our two year-round schools in, in session, and our two restart schools will start on Thursday and Friday. I had the opportunity to visit the, one of our year-round schools when they started, and it was smooth. And I, and I happened to just overhear on the announcement something that I know that Dr. Faust had been talking about with his principal. So it was really exciting to be able to listen to that in action. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to going on Thursday and Friday to our two restart schools. And then, and good luck to all the traditional schools, and with your open houses coming up. We look forward to that. And want to encourage all parents who are listening to attend your school's open house if you can, and find out how you can get involved in your school at the school level through your PTA, PTO, parent support organizations, your school improvement team, and whatever else that your school might need, might see as a priority. So thank you in advance for all of you parents who I know will be doing that. I did want to just also give a shout out to the, our Career and Technical Department, and, well, actually, it's really our Technology Department, too, putting together, putting together the coding camp, that the board members had a chance to go and watch their presentations. And I'm going to tell you what, these kids are amazing. Some of the things that they thought of to create apps for was just like spot on. I'm like, I wanted them to like sell it to me right then, you know, to help me with, with different kinds of things. And their presentation skills were just, you know, phenomenal, you know, for sixth and seventh graders, talking to just a room full of adult strangers. So thank you, Ms. Brinson, and to the CTE, Ms. Futrell, you know, for putting that together, and the incredible partnership, you know, through Apple, that our, our board, I mean, not our board, our superintendent and his team was able to secure. Also, too, just wanted to let you know, too, that several of our board members have been away doing some training this summer. I attended the North Carolina School Boards Association Summer Conference and the Legal Conference, so I've got some, got a lot of good insight that I was able to share or will be sharing with our staff on different kinds of things that the NCSBA is following on our behalf. So, and that's really about it. I'm looking forward to a good school year, starting it off with a bang, and you'll be hearing more about, you know, getting on the energy bus, and I hope that you will join us for a very productive ride. Okay. So next is our information. So first up, Mr. Anderson, Brogdon Hall Gymnasium structural repairs update.
Thank you. You all were able to share and celebrate such good news, and unfortunately, I'm not here to do that tonight. The manufacturing company, as you know, providing the wood flooring for the Brogdon Hall Gymnasium has gone out of business. They're not able to provide the wood, or the, our contractor is not able to secure that wood. Now, the contractor has identified another wood flooring company that, that they are working with, but there will be a delay in completing this project. One of the things that we've been looking at very closely, wood floor comes in different grades. Grades typically, or generally, refer to the clearness of the wood. So a, a wood that has a grade one has very, very few color variations in that wood. And a, and a grade three would have more color variations in the wood. This project included a grade two, and that's consistent with the other high school gymnasiums that were recently construction, constructed. While we can get a grade three in faster, New Hanover High School and our facility planning and construction staff really felt that it was to our advantage to stay with that grade two because of the light stain that we're using on that floor. So right now, we do not have confirmed dates, but I can let you know that the wood flooring is expected to be delivered in early September. It'll take about a month to install. And the bleachers are expected to be delivered in late September. The installation of those bleachers is scheduled for early October, and we anticipate the final completion of the project to be mid to late October at this point. As we can, as we move along in our project and we can confirm delivery dates, I'll be glad to share that information with you. At this time, given the schedule that I just presented, the delay will impact volleyball only. Volleyball will begin August 1st. They'll practice at North Carolina Coastal Volleyball Gym. When school starts and JV volleyball starts, they will practice at the Princess Place Gym right after school, and Varsity will continue to practice at the Coastal Volleyball Gym. Games will be held at Cape Fear Community College's Swart Center. This delay in the project will not impact wrestling, which is another fall sport. Wrestling matches are hosted in the Princess Place Gym. If, I want to just, you know, we, we, we plan for the best, or we, we hope for the best. We plan for the worst. Cut that backwards. But I always tell people, we have a schedule. We have, that's a Plan A. So have a Plan B. You hope you never need it, but. Point being, if Brogdon Hall is not ready for the start of basketball season, the Varsity Boys Basketball Team will practice at Williston. The Varsity Girls will practice at DC Virgo, and the JV teams will practice at Snipes. Games will be held at Cape Fear Community College's Swart Center. The first day of basketball practice is October 31st. So if everything goes as scheduled, you know, basketball will not be impacted. But again, we're going to have a Plan B, just in case, and until we can get these dates confirmed. Are there any questions?
Yeah. I just had a quick one. I'm not familiar with where the North Carolina Coastal Volleyball Gym is. Can you, how far away is that from the school?
I believe that's, that's out toward the, well, they used to be at the airport, and I think they, is it still at the airport? Or did they move out towards Castle Hain?
It's out near Castle Hain, isn't it? Isn't that where I saw you one time?
Wow.
I would say you take the, you go over the Heskey-Ham's Bridge, take that exit, and it's left that complex.
An industrial park.
Yeah.
And so will our students, will our athletes be just taken on the bus there?
I don't know.
Be able to drive? Huh? Okay.
I didn't, I didn't ask that question. Very good question. New Hanover High School does have an activity bus that's assigned to their school.
Okay.
So if they may be using that, if they need transportation, we will certainly provide transportation.
Okay. That's, that was my question to you, in case kids can't get there if they get, if they don't drive. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Well, that's a big bad bummer, but we're glad that you have a Plan, Plan A, Plan B, and we'll look forward to hearing something positive next month. Okay. Next up is informational framework. The, I'm sorry. Instructional framework is, Dr. Fason on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to take a few minutes to share with the board and our community our instructional framework. And I know I've shared, the board has seen this before, but I really want to recap for everyone some of the highlight points that we're focusing on this year. So I'm going to back up and just say, the instructional framework is a way we can have a common vision and a common language among our teachers. So it was created with teachers. We used, we reached out to our teacher advisory groups. They went back to their schools and actually collaborated with their teachers to come up, what are those instructional practices that we feel best and communicated in our district? So then the principals view this as well. So we're really happy to say that this is our instructional framework. So you will note with the instructional framework, and I'm going to ask you to slide down, there are four pillars that outline an instructional framework. Planning, instruction, culture, and reflection. Out of these four pillars, we have lifted up three areas we're considering are focus areas. We know if you try to do too many things well, too many things, you do nothing well. So we are going to lift up three things that we're going to focus on this year. So we don't want our teachers to have to do anything new. Our teachers have gone through a lot. We just want to help them hone on their craft. That, that is the goal this year, just to do what we know as teachers and educators are the best practices. So the first one is, when you slide down, scroll down to prac, planning, is the top one. And that is aligning learning targets. So we are lifting up learning targets, and you might remember them. I've heard them called objectives or essential questions. They're all the same thing, but it's about where do we want our students to go? What is the objective of this lesson? So we want to unpack them. Actually, have students and teachers working before they do a lesson, what is the goal of this lesson? What does this, this target mean? What are these verbs? What am I, what are you asking me to learn? And that way, it'll make it so the students are thinking about that throughout. We also are asking that the teachers reference this. This is what we're doing. Remember, we are analyzing character traits. So everything we do is coming back if that was the learning target. So that is number one, is learning targets. Number two, for our, if you scroll down again, I'm sorry, is under, keep going, I'm sorry. Well, the, number two is visual learning tools. So visual learning tools are basically walls that teach. When you walk in a classroom and you know what students are learning, because you can see their workup, you can see the anchor charts and some of the things that students are doing, and they're collaborating with the teacher. So that is the second one. And the last one that we are doing for our focus area is student discourse. And what is student discourse? It's just a fancy way for us as educators to say, students talking using academic vocabulary. So they're using that key, those key terms. When we're talking about things, they are using the vocabulary that is related to the subject matter. And we give them time to collaborate and talk, and it's structured. So we put structures in place. So we put structures in place, so both students are talking, they know where they're going. So again, there are three focus areas. Learning targets, unpacking the learning target, visual, visual learning tools, and student discourse. Those are the areas that we will be focusing on as an, as a district instructing. We know, if you look at this instructional framework, there are a number, a number of things here, and all of those are valuable. All of those are important. We know teachers will still, in the culture area, they will still be in relationship with students. We know that, we expect that, and we want that. We know with, when we look at reflection, we're still going to use data to drive instruction. But we picked out three that we felt if we could get our teachers to hone in on this, it'll take us to the next level with instruction. So, we presented this at the leadership retreat. It went over very well, and we're excited. And we'll be sharing this with our teachers in the coming days, and we look forward to supporting, supporting them in this. Any questions?
I just wanted to make one comment. First of all, thank you, Dr. Faust, for inviting the Board of Education to come to your leadership retreat. And I'm going to tell you what, the, she, Dr. Faust went through this many, many times in a lot of different sessions. And to Mr. Wilderbor's point about like, what was the feedback when we were listening, you know, to Ms. Barnum talking? The feedback on this was phenomenal. Everyone was buying into it. And we're already talking about the ways they were going to be posting their target goals. And so I'm excited, you know, to be able to go into a classroom and just see that. And I know our substitute teachers will be happy to see that, and parents will be happy to see that. So thank you, Dr. Faust, for the work that you did in putting this together. It's, it's a nice little bible, if you will, for, you know, how we're going to, how we're going to move forward in 22, 23. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is, where'd I go? Jumped ahead. The social studies curriculum update. Will that be you as well?
Yes, that will be me.
Okay.
And so, we want it, you know, we live in a nation that's very rich with history and our state and our own community. So, Mr. Matthews, our, our social studies lead, has done so much to provide resources, and our teachers are doing so many things to communicate valuable history. And we just want to highlight it. So, we're going to start with 9/11 because it will be coming up. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that we provide our teachers, our secondary and our elementary teachers with resources. There's also a documentary, a documentary out, and it's updated each year. Last year, we had great participation with this, so we'll be doing that again as well. So just make sure everybody knows that 9/11 is coming up. And, and we need to make sure that everyone knows and realizes that we do a lot with that in our school, because that is a critical part in our nation's history. Also, Constitution Day. Constitution Day is actually the 17th, but that falls on a Saturday. So it will be recognized on the 16th this year. We also send out materials, materials for our schools, our secondary and our elementary coaches and administrators, so they can have the resources to do that. Last year, Mr. Matthews found that there was a lot of different schools who actually had invited guest speakers. They included announcements about this. So our schools have really stepped up with this. I just want to highlight them and just call them out for a job well done on doing that. And 1898, 1898 is a significant part of our history here locally. So I wanted to share where it is represented in our community, I mean, in our school curriculum. First, and the first place they see this will be in the third grade. In the third grade, they do the Tar Heel Walking Tour. And they actually go to John Taylor's home, where the tragic event happened, and they visit the memorial. So, that is what the tour is about. He also, and when I say he, Mr. Matthews, our social studies lead, provides them, provides our schools with resources. And there is a historical fiction story that they can read. It kind of helps them reaccount that, you, you're thinking from the level of a third grader. So they have that as well. In fourth grade, we do, you know, our state history. So we revisit that here in our community, and we make sure that they have that, so they see it again in fourth grade. In eighth grade, it is a part of our eighth grade curriculum as well. Because you know, our eighth grade curriculum focuses on North Carolina and American history. So 1898 is there as well. And they also have what we'll call, what he calls a history lab. And, you know, you think about labs, you think about dissecting, and this is how they can dissect the history. It actually allows them to do different stuff with it, write postcards and be transported in that time. And then lastly, in, in high school, it is a part of American history. So I just wanted to take a minute to highlight some of the wonderful tools that we have that highlights 1898. And I'll take any questions.
Well, if I could, from far, far away here, first of all, I, I do think it's, it's very respectful that we do talk about 9/11. I think that's, that's very, very strong. September 16th, September 17th, Constitution Day, again, I think that's, that's excellent. I'm, you know, I'm going to continue to be concerned about our social studies curriculum overall with, you know, glossary terms such as oppressed and oppressor, marginalized people. And I'm just concerned with our 1898, that we are, you know, that, I think we should teach factual history, period, end discussion, not, you know, change facts and stuff. So can you tell me without a doubt, you know, that we're not, you know, and like I said, I don't want to get into Republican, Democrat, but.
Right.
You know, it's, it's been changed, and it's been changed again, it's been changed again. So can, can you speak to that, that we are definitely teaching it factually? Because I've heard from a lot of people that it is, it is being changed and repackaged, especially the 1898.
So what I will say to you is, we share facts. We ask our teachers to share facts. We, you have to be very careful with history, not to bring, or anything you're teaching, to bring your interpretation. That is not our rules educators. So can I say that all teachers, you know, somebody doesn't slip up, like, I, I can't say that. We, we work with them and try to make sure that they don't. You shouldn't, when someone is teaching something, whether it's history or anything else, you should never know their view, because it's not about their view. It's about the facts. So that's what I would say.
Thank you. And just a question, because I, another question I've been getting a lot of lately is where, okay, Mrs. Smith would like to know exactly what her eighth grader is being taught. Where, what would be the easiest way for Mrs. Smith to go online to find out, or, you know, exactly, like, for instance, these, these actual extra tools we're giving teachers? Whether it be 9/11, whether it be Constitution Day, or whether it be 1898? Where can they see exactly what, what's going on?
So, Dr. Faust shared briefly that we are actually, you know, first of all, let me answer by saying, they could always go to the state guide and see the standards, but that's not parent friendly. So what we've done is, under Dr. Faust's charges, we have created what we call a scoping sequence. And parents will be able to go and see what their child is being taught by the unit. Also, they'll have resources to partner with us, because that's our big thing too, right? We want to tell you what we're teaching so you can help us and partner with us. So we have scoping sequence that outlines what, what is being taught. And the parents can just click on that. If I have a, a child in sixth grade and I want to know, what is the social studies curriculum, right? What are they being taught? I click on that, it is there, the standards are there, and some resources are there.
And that is on our website, or is that on the school level website? Where is that exactly?
That is going to be live by the first day of school. Just keep in mind, we are doing this to, we have one social studies lead person, one science. So it's taking them time to make sure we get this all there. So it'll be ready, most of it is ready, but they will be, it would go live by the first day of school at the latest with the core areas. So social studies and all those, and we're still working on some of our CTE. But we're, we are making it so parents can definitely see. We want to be very transparent.
That's awesome. So it'd be under, the, the regular website under, you know, instruction?
Yes.
That's still being determined.
We think it's great. So what I'll do when it's live, and so maybe the September board meeting, I'll actually walk you through it and let you see it. But it's right on our regular board meeting. I could do that, or, but it's right there on the curriculum page, I'm sorry, on the curriculum page, our regular curriculum page.
Thank you, Dr. Faust.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
That's important. Judy, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Oh, well, when Mr. Wilderbor asked his question, I actually did the, and I wish I still could, did the historic tours for the third graders Tar Heels Go Walking. It was great. But we cover an awful lot of history of Wilmington, a lot. And 1898's a very integral part of it, but that's only one of probably a dozen parts. And, and we teach facts, and the facts are there, they have them on the signage and the memorial, what it's talking about. So, I mean, they're not giving opinions, they're just reading the facts that are actually approved by the historic district here in Wilmington before they put these information sources up.
And also too, I wanted to reiterate that this has been going on for a number of years, like eight to 10 years. I mean, that we have been talking about this and adding in new things as they become, as they become developed and input is received. So, thank you so much, Dr. Faust, for that update. And please extend our, our thanks to Mr. Matthews for, you know, staying on top of all this and, and keeping us, keeping us current as we're studying our history. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is item D, which is Classified Recognition Program. No, we added that part of our agenda. And here comes Dr. Barnes. Oh, I mean.
I didn't do another outfit change up, I should have. Good evening again. Thank you for having me here. Over the past several months, we've had multiple opportunities to hear from our employees, to hear from our families regarding culture, climate, working conditions, compensation, classification, to name a few. And a reoccurring theme really of great interest to human resources, of course, many staff across the division, was the staff's desire, classified staff's desire to be recognized in a similar fashion as our instructional staff. So teacher recognition, you know, think teacher recognition or principal recognition. So with this information and direction from Dr. Faust and Dr. Barnes, we're really excited to share with you and all of our employees this evening, the Excellence Exemplified Classified Recognition Program. Thank you. So in New Hanover County Schools, expectations is an excellence, is an expectation. I'm sorry, I'll try that again. So with that, it is an expectation for our students and for our staff. And this program, what it will do is allow our staff the opportunities to recognize and nominate their colleagues. So nominations can be from teachers, administrators, and of course, any classified staff. And what we're doing is looking for opportunities for our employees to recognize excellence that they see in their everyday work. So what that will mean is excellence demonstrated through their job responsibilities, making unique contributions to their department, to their school, or to the division as a whole, creating a supportive environment where there's a culture of respect and inclusion, all while making a positive impact on student achievement, knowing that's really what we're all here for. These award recipients will truly exemplify what excellence is in New Hanover County Schools. So the nomination process, the criteria you'll see is listed here. It touches upon what I just read and what we're looking for, and someone that embodies excellence in their work. There will be a selection committee that will be representation from across the school division. And these awards will be offered, or, or our staff will be recognized four times a year. And all of our eligible employees by department or category are listed here. So it is all of our classified support staff. Thank you. So these are just the highlights. Really, there are many pieces and details to the program, and this information following tonight will be available on the Human Resources webpage. We'd ask that you visit that website where you'll see an additional presentation that really goes into more of the details, where you can find the deadlines to submit your nomination, when those awards will be released, and the nomination forms that will need to be submitted, as well as information about what we're looking for more specifically. So you'll find that information on the HR website. So we encourage everyone to nominate staff. We're very proud of all of our employees here in the district, and this is the opportunity to recognize those that you work alongside of that truly are excellent employees. And then we'll ask that you turn and tune into school board meetings where four times a year again, two staff from across the division will be recognized, of course, by Dr. Faust and the board.
Ms. Adams?
I'm an HR person, and I love this. Thrilled to see it. Thank you. I guess my question is, our families get to see a lot of amazing things that our staff do as well. Do we have anything in place at this point, or is there any discussion about our families within the county being able to celebrate in a different way? I know this is staff driven, which is fantastic. I love peer awards. But what about for our families down the line, since you guys are doing all these great programs?
Sure, absolutely. For our families to be able to nominate staff, absolutely. And I think this is a great starting place, and, and we'll work closely with communications. Just an absolutely wonderful team to work with in terms of sharing this information. But that's wonderful feedback, and it's something that we've talked about. And I think sort of piloting and getting out there and looking at what this will require, that's a definite, a great place to go.
I love it. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah. Dr. Barnes, did you want to add in? Your, your head is getting bigger and bigger on our screen. So it looks like maybe you want to say something? Oh, no, that's Pete's head, sorry.
That's what I was going to say.
Never mind, I need new glasses.
We both look, he's much answerer than I am.
What a nice thing to say, Ms. Cravill.
I'm sorry.
No, but our, our intention will be able to be allowed other folks, students and parents to nominate as well. So we'll be working with that to increase that.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
And actually, I have my hand raised, and I'll do it again. I have two quick, two quick, number one, I think it's an outstanding idea. I, I think we need to highlight our classified staff and everywhere we can, so that's outstanding. Is there a thought that we eventually would bring it on to the certified staff also? Because everybody likes to hear good things.
Already do.
Absolutely. I, I think in terms of a recognition program, I, I would believe, strongly believe that school-based recognitions occur, you know, all the time. And I think if there's another structure or recommendation in place to do something outside of what we already do to recognize our instructional staff, is certainly something that, based on Dr. Faust and, and Dr. Barnes's approval, we could create.
Isn't that something that we do through the Inside NHCS newsletter already? Yeah, so we are working on that.
Sharing stories, absolutely.
But thank you for, for doing that, because yeah, it, everybody, nobody does the work to be recognized, but it, it does feel good when you are. So, thank you very much. Okay. So that's all we have for information tonight. Next on our agenda is call to the audience, but before we do that, I'd like to take a five-minute break. So it's 6:24, so please come back at 6:30 so we can, and we are, just so everybody wants to know, we are like right on target. So yay. Yay. Yay me.
Ms. McLaure Brown, go ahead.
The vision of New Hanover County school system is to provide and maintain a safe, respectful, and secure learning environment. But can you provide a safe and secure learning environment when you lock children in seclusion rooms? The answer is no. 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 It is impossible. Locking children in seclusion rooms causes them harm, feeling of anger, embarrassment, humiliation, sadness, loss of their dignity, loss of hearing, learning time, pain that lasts for a lifetime. And sadly enough, we also know that locking children in seclusion rooms may be a deadly practice. End the use of seclusion rooms in all New Hanover County schools. Seek input from our educators and families. Provide education and training in the use of positive behavior supports, crisis reduction and management, de-escalation techniques, techniques, and other best practices. Pass policy that achieves the vision of our school system to keep our children safe. Make our vision for our children more than just some words on a website in the use of seclusion rooms for our children.
Thank you. You're going to go up instead? Okay. All right. So speakers, next up is Barbara Garrow. Our countdown clock is not working.
I have it now.
Okay. All right. Then never mind. We'll save you from my loud, obnoxious buzzer. So go ahead.
I'm glad I'm here tonight. I haven't been here for a month or two for several reasons, but I would like to ask you to please place on your September board meeting agenda an item that would end the use of seclusion rooms in New Hanover schools by July 1st, 2023. That timeframe gives 11 months to prepare for the end of this isolation method that data shows to be ineffective and harmful. It is not a practice that is employed in many of the New Hanover County schools, and therefore, the end of this practice should not be hard to accomplish. You know it's harmful. The audience knows it's harmful, and we want you to please end this practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrow. Sam Pierce.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all the work that you do. It's so important. This is my first time before this body, and I'm brought here compelled to speak on the subject of seclusion rooms. I find it very, very disturbing, and I just don't believe that there's any research that supports this practice for changing behavior in a positive way. I think actually, there's a lot of evidence that this can do great harm. And this is harm that will pay, society will pay for, for a long time, when you disrupt the well-being of a child by putting them into a seclusion room. I feel strongly about this, and I feel strongly about the children. And I just ask that you bring this forward and you end this practice for the school year, the 2023-24 school year. I think that's time to get it done. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Laura Axthelm. Oh, I'm sorry, Sam. I'm sorry. Wrong name. I thanked you for being the wrong person. Robert Bellamy.
How you doing today? I just want to explain this the way I see it. I, it's kind of simple, but I just wrote it. I'm not here to place any personal attack on anyone here, because, believe me, I like everyone here. But I know if any of you board members were kids again, you would all be, you all look at being in seclusion in a little different way. I like Ms. Judge Judas, Ms. Judy Justice, in my mind, would be like, why are you doing this to me? Even as a kid, she would know this is not right, and fight against anything cruel, any type, any type of cruel treatment. And the fight never ends with Ms. Judy Justice, I know that. Mr. Hugh Manus, he probably would be like, I don't understand this. This is America. We cannot allow this treatment. My daddy is a mayor. This is in my mind, is what I'm thinking. And Ms. Craybill, you know, would be fighting all the way to the end, biting if you have to, if needed, because she would be, would not allow anyone to treat her in any foul way. I know you're a fighter. Dr. Faust would be like, this don't seem right. I need to talk to my parents. Can I call my dad? That's where I see that. If you was a kid, you probably would say that. And Ms. Adams, you know, she probably would say, Ms. Adams would be like, I would not accept this. I won't let you treat me like a boy. My daddy will be here and tell you all off tomorrow. I am a princess. I see all of you being in some type of fighting spirits, and I feel that you can also do that as grownups. And I think, you know, I know you guys made a great decision with the kids, one through seven, and I know you guys, you know, are terrific, you know, you got a terrific mind, you're terrific thinkers, you wouldn't be in this position if you weren't. So I feel that you will make a great decision when it comes to getting these kids together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me just say that the live streaming is back up. Okay? So we're back on track, but for the folks who are listening in, that little section that you missed, you'll be able to review that tomorrow when we get on TV. Next up is Laura Axthelm. Hope I pronounced that close.
You get it now? This is my second time.
Okay.
You get it now? My husband's coming up too. He practiced. It's Axthelm.
Okay.
It's German, and they don't.
No T?
Yeah.
Okay.
In America, we say phonetically anyway. I'm here to urge you all to plan to vote to end the use of seclusion rooms and closets in all New Hanover County schools by July 1st, 2023. Please revise policy 4320R. With 11 months between now and then, real progress can be made educating and training school staff in positive behavior alternatives that will benefit all students, staff, families, and the community. As many other people have said, this is a long-term effect. Rejection, isolation, shunning, expulsion, and seclusion do nothing positive for a person, and especially an immature child. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. You're at the staff house?
I am here tonight in support of changing policy 4302R and ending the use of seclusion rooms effective 2023-2024 school year. Similar to the change in policy regarding ending suspension of children four, five, six, and seven years old, with specific exceptions, ending the use of seclusion rooms would have similar exceptions. Use of rooms require written consent from parents following child-specific IEP describing behavior and circumstances in which seclusion could be used, and situations when seclusion is necessary to protect the student or another person from physical harm or non-physical intervention, or when that has failed. Of the 25,000 students in New Hanover County school system, approximately 50 were secluded each year. There's no data available for the school year 2021-2022. The percentage of total students affected is minimal. Minimal training is required for the students, for the schools that would have to put something in place to stop using seclusion. The board should be sure to make a policy change to treat all students equally. Therefore, a vote to change the policy for school year 2023-2024 should create minimal disruption. Please change the policy and stop traumatizing our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jack House. Mary Claylog?
I'm a friend of Peter Rawlitch, and he asked, he's recovering from surgery from last week, and he asked me to read a brief statement of his. First, I want to publicly thank some of our board members for publicly supporting end-of-the-year seclusion rooms by the beginning of the 23-24 school year. Thank you to Judy Justice, Stephanie Walker, and Pete Woldibor. Children have been harmed by being forced into padded closets and will continue to be harmed during the current school year. New policies can take time to implement, and student IEPs will need to be revised. But based on your own data, the next 11 months is more than enough time to begin the training of positive behavior alternatives that will benefit all children and school staff. Vote to ban the use of seclusion rooms at your September 6th meeting. Thank you. And he also said that he'll be back for the September 6th meeting, and looks forward to celebrating the end of another punitive practice that targets our youngest, neediest, and most oppressed students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claylog. Jill Potman?
Hi there. This is my first time speaking to the board, and I thank all the members for the opportunity. I'm an immigration and human rights attorney, a former graduate of Hoggard High School, and first vice chair of the Democratic Party, and I strongly believe we must end the use of seclusion rooms by July 1st of 2023. Children should not be locked in cages at the border, and they should not be locked in padded classrooms in our local schools. They are unnecessary, ineffective, and unsupported by data and research. They not only disproportionately affect and harm students of color and those with disabilities, but they haven't been shown to be effective in any manner, in any positive way. Policy 4302R unquestionably is detrimental to our students, and I respectfully request that the board changes the policy at the next meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hocken. Kami O'Keefe.
Hello. I've lived in Wilmington for over 20 years. Once again, I want to congratulate this board on rescinding the policy of out-of-school suspensions for children seven and under. Tonight, I will advocate for another positive policy change. Joining others in opposition to the policy of the use of seclusion rooms in our schools, I request that the board end this policy by the beginning of the 23-24 school year. Because of the small number of schools and students involved, 11 months is sufficient to support administrators, educators, and staff in implementing positive behavioral alternatives. The use of seclusion rooms harms our children. Change this policy and help our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Keefe. Alicia Ogundeli. Alicia? Stephen Axthelm?
Thanks to my wife for coaching you up on the pronunciation. My name is Stephen Axthelm. I have two young adult children, Emmett and Charlotte. I cannot think of any time during their schooling when they would have benefited from being locked up alone in a room. I assume all of you have children, or grandchildren and grandchildren, right, Judy? Do you think they would have benefited by being locked up alone in a room? Scott Wilson's son spent 1,900 minutes in seclusion rooms in 2018, 2019. Do you think any of your children or grandchildren would have benefited from spending 31 and 2/3 hours of their school year locked up alone in a seclusion room? And then there's this. The most recent data, this is from the Star News, from the Office of Civil Rights on Seclusion in New Hanover County Schools filed in 2017, shows 55 students with disabilities were put into seclusion during the survey year. Of those students, of those 55 students, 70% were black, 30% were white, while in total, there were 1,087 black students with disabilities and 1,431 white students with disabilities. That's 43% black students and 67% white students. So there's something else there. The New Hanover County school system is in the business of helping children learn, not locking children up. Is this the training wheels experience for the school-to-prison pipeline? End the use of seclusion rooms, please, by July 1st, 2023. Use the next 11 months to begin the training of positive behavior alternatives that will benefit all the children and the staff. Vote to ban the use of seclusion rooms on September 6th.
Carol Seedian? Carol Seedian?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm brand new to this, but I am a mother and a grandmother, and I was a school social worker, not in North Carolina, but for over 35 years. What we do know, what research does show, is that the dropout rate among students is very much affected by disengagement. And students in elementary, early elementary school become very easily disengaged from education, from the process, by suspensions, by seclusion, by restraints, by punitive disciplinary actions. And we do know that children can learn. Educators are here to provide for the whole child, and we know that social, emotional learning, interpersonal learning, positive behavioral supports help children learn to manage themselves, be able to control their behavior, and work appropriately with others. So I urge this board to ban seclusion and restraints, and to begin, initiate training staff and educators to provide positive behavioral supports. Thank you.
Thank you, Seedian. Mark Whitehead?
For the Ed, Dr. Faust, people, thank you. I am here to expose some of the insulting, wasteful, factually baseless, racist, critical race theory indoctrination that is forced on our teachers. Two summers ago, we were forced to watch an Equity podcast by a man with an online degree. He began by saying at 4:18, and I quote, "I ended up in Idaho. Not a lot of brothers out here, but I get by." At 5:30, he said, "You think with a PhD, a brother would know how to do fractions and decimals, not a guy with an online degree?" And he said this because he was talking about his kid. It was fully 15 minutes into the presentation that he started talking about what he was supposed to, and this was apparently his modus operandi, because the teachers at another presentation told me that a teacher actually typed in asking him to get to the point at the 15-minute mark. There was only one fact in this whole seminar of two hours, and this is one that I typed in the chat box. Over 50 Asian organizations have recently sued the Ivy Leagues and UNC Chapel Hill for admissions, to which our online doctor was shocked. He had no idea because it did not fit his narrative of victimization, which he reinforced at an hour and 17 minutes by saying, quote, "Our system was not built for people like me," end quote. Well, apparently, our system was built for the first-generation Asian kids, because they do the best. I cannot comment in part two of his presentation because the next day, he forgot about it and came on an hour late. The third time I saw him, he did the same thing. That's what we're spending your money on. We also had a microaggression training. The lady showed us an example of microaggression from the TV show Blackish, in which a black female anesthesiologist is asked by a white female counterpart where she got her degree, and she answers, "University of California, Los Angeles." The older white lady is really impressed, and the character in the show became very angry and think, well, not very angry, but angry and insulted that this was a microaggression. There are three things wrong with this. One, the lead character is insulted by a microaggression of someone insulating that she only advanced because of her color. They also had a "check your privilege" slide on this presentation. That's the exact thing.
Mr. Whitehead, your time is up.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandy Isles?
Because you're at the podium, and you're ready. No, 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 no. That's not how it works. It starts when you speak. You didn't do it to the other people. On July 19th, the Department of Ed released new guidance to help schools support students with disabilities and avoid discriminatory use of discipline. In this guidance, the OCR, and I quote, "A school policy that is neutral on its face may still have the unjustified discriminatory effect of denying a student with a disability meaningful access to the school's aides, benefits, or services, or of excluding them based on disability, even if the discrimination is unintentional. If OCR finds sufficient evidence that the policy has discriminatory effects based on disability, OCR would likely consider the policy to be discriminatory," end quote. In New Hanover County, over 90% of seclusions involve disabled children. The Elementary Education Specifications Document adopted by the board in 2009 requires seclusion rooms to be built, NEC classrooms. There is no such requirement for gen ed. Why aren't the rooms built in neutral spaces that serve all students? New Hanover County specifically targets disabled students with this requirement, and for 13 years have shown clear intent to disproportionately seclude and discriminate against them. Not only this, but the board consistently fails to support our EC programs, staff, and students. Ms. Adams, you bring up safety, but I've never heard you ask how you can improve our EC programs. You defend this policy by blaming young children and have chosen to discriminate against them versus protecting them. This is not equity. New Hanover County has received negative media attention for the use of seclusion. Disability rights paid us a visit. The Department of Justice is looking at the use of seclusion across school districts in North Carolina, and now the OCR is telling you to avoid discriminatory discipline. You must end seclusion. Otherwise, you risk getting a call from the Department of Justice or Office of Civil Rights. The choice is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Isles. Christina Mercier?
It's no secret that New Hanover County Schools has had its share of issues with employees who have had inappropriate interactions with students. As of now, these former employees have either been convicted of their crimes or died before trial. As a result of their actions, all teachers in New Hanover County Schools were required to take professional development on sexual assault. Now, I'm going to talk personally about what happened to me as I took the class, which was online and offered during COVID when I was working from home. As I was taking the class, I had a memory I'd repressed pop into my mind. I had been sexually assaulted over several weeks by a peer who was in my Sunday school class. He did not rape me, but he definitely touched me without my consent. Here I was, a veteran teacher, and I didn't know what to do about it. The memory took over my thoughts. I had no one to talk to. There was no instruction in the course that said, "If anything in this course has caused you trauma, please contact." I was alone, and I didn't know what to do. Surely, I'm not the only teacher who had repressed memories of sexual assault. I eventually sought out professional counseling on my own, but why was there no preparation by the school system and professionals who created the course for this? Why were we left alone? As I've dealt with my resurfaced memories, I've seen multiple articles about how the lawyers for New Hanover County Schools are trying to get most of the defendants in the civil case concerning Michael Kelly's victims dropped. Every time I see or hear this mentioned, I become angry. One of the last stories I read said the victims are going to have to undergo a mental health evaluation again. I cannot believe the torture the school system's lawyers are foisting upon these young adults. These young people were abused for years, and some even told adults who did not act on the information. I cannot imagine the anguish they must live with daily, and honestly, the fact that they are still living is a feat in itself, and I hope they all understand that. It does not matter that none of you were here when Michael Kelly's crimes occurred. While it's an issue you inherited, you should not be revictimizing these young people. I'm urging you to not worry about saving money. Settle the civil case and let these young men heal, and don't just concern yourself with checking off boxes when it comes to something as important as sexual assault. We all deserve better. Make that your legacy.
Thank you, Christina. Lesley Cozy?
Tonight, I want to talk about setting timelines. Over the last several meetings, members of this board and your advisors have repeatedly said it is impossible to set a timeline for eliminating the use of seclusion rooms. I strongly disagree. In the 30 years I taught in New Hanover, we continually had timelines. It might have been a professional development course that we were doing independently. There was a completion date, therefore a timeline. Training for state or local testing had timelines. This is true everywhere. One example outside of schools, my son-in-law works for the computer programming company SAS. His job is project-based. He is given a project and a completion date. He is responsible for the timeline to finish the project by the designated date. Timelines are vital and readily doable. For the ending the use of seclusion rooms, the timeline is simple. There is an obvious completion date, completely in the use of seclusion rooms by August 2023. You already know the steps necessary to complete this. Use the training program the district already has to train the programs in the required schools how to de-escalate and make the use of seclusion rooms unnecessary. You have already identified that there are less than 10 schools that still require this training. So, as one prominent shoe company says, just do it.
Thank you, Ms. Cozy. Dorian Kermarty?
My name is Dorian Kermarty. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Bernadette Allen at Rachel Freeman PTA. Today, we had open house. We signed up over 50 parents so far that I left around 5:30, and 10 of the parents, five of the parents are new parents, and the other five are men of color. So that's a big improvement for us. The other thing I would like to say that, you know, seclusion does need to end right away, because at the town hall, I asked the question, and the response was, because of staffing? So if seclusion is still happening now, but you can't end it because of staffing problems, then are you really adequately staffed? I mean, unless you are 110% comfortable with locking a child in a room because they threw a chair across the room. I mean, you're fine with locking a child in a room and leaving them there, because that's best for them, because he threw a chair and that scares you. But really, he's probably just acting out because he doesn't know how to express his emotions properly, or maybe he has a behavioral issue, but the solution is to lock him away. And then expect him to do great things when it comes to growth and progress in school. Everyone here wants to end it tonight, even the people on the right. You can make a motion tonight for a tentative timeline to end seclusion. You can at least do that, and if you get it wrong, you amend it, but you can at least do that tonight. So I don't see how we are staffed at all these schools doing great things, but at the same time practicing seclusion. I don't understand that, but mental health is a top priority here. It's something we love and practice here.
Thank you, Mr. Kermarty.
Thank you.
Chris Sutton?
First, I wanted to comment about the Title IX policy change that's under first reading. It states that basically, if a formal complaint comes forward, it's usually resolved through a formal investigation and adjudication. a formal investigation and adjudication. And now we're trying to add in a sentence about, or a inform, or an informal resolution process, which is concerning. We've already had issues with that where people went through a complaint process, got ran around in a circle, and it was considered an informal process. Things need to be done. There needs to be a paper trail. There needs to be accountability. No gray area. Please do not reconsider that whoever decided that one. That was ridiculous. Come on now. Next, Faust anniversary. Congratulations, two years here. That means either an evaluation just occurred or an evaluation's about to happen. So let's go back and review what's happened as far as Kansas City comments from teachers and administrators. We had people state that they resigned because they were bullied and disrespected, they that you created a toxic work environment, and he actually threatened staff at a convocation there in Kansas City. There was comments that basically he blamed teachers for the shortcomings of the district, which that reminds me that we had the same thing happen here where we had dozens of teachers show up and confront you about some of your statements. And then the same thing, we had the New Hanover County Association of Educators start a petition for you to resign as well. Same thing, this is from a news article. "The move leaves the district with few apparent options. Most top administrators from the previous superintendent left in months after Faust." Where's Mr. O'Brien at? Where's a bunch of other people that have been here for decades and that I've known for decades? This is our city and you came in and you've pushed people out. Same thing with the Netherwind. A comment left, Faust targeted black administrators. People were fired, demoted, or forced to resign. Where's LaShawn Smith at? You resigned, you demoted her, right? And you did so stating that you had the will of the board. That's what your attorney stated, that because of your contract, you had the will of the board to do so. This is ridiculous.
Mr. Sutton, your time is up.
Y'all have a good day. See you next month.
Josie Barnhart.
Tonight, I want to openly address my concerns for the pre-K and elementary implementation of the sexual abuse prevention curriculum, Safer Smarter Kids. I've spoken up with my concerns about our district suddenly bypassing parents to survey our students. And in the summer of 2021, New Hanover County changed their policy to allow surveys to be administered to students without receiving parental consent by simply stating an opt-out policy. I've questioned this decision because in the last year, we have seen surveys of the Title IX survey, we've seen Panorama surveys at select elementary schools, and also the Tobacco State Survey. I've asked, what are these goals? What changes are we planning to make with them? How can we ensure students of parents who do not want their kids participating have alternate activities? Who gets this data? Parents don't like to feel bypassed when it comes to our kids. This sex abuse prevention curriculum for our three-year-olds came as a result from the Title IX survey that we gave to our secondary students. Let me be clear, it is not the role of schools to talk to our kids about sex. When we talk about this in an open forum, what we're essentially doing is a group therapy session. I'm asking you today to have an alternative for parents like me who do want, who do not want my kids participating in a potentially traumatic experience that they're going to be sharing from from counterparts of an experience that they should not have had as a child. We should be training our teachers in signs of prevention so that intentional intervention with specific kids can be given. Two questions I want to ask. Will this curriculum for our three-year-olds require parental consent versus an opt-out program, which is what we just updated in our last month's policy for our middle schoolers that said? The second is, with budget cuts being a concern, how much money would we save if we didn't utilize this curriculum and instead implemented trainings for our teachers? I'd love to hear the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhart. Melissa Mason.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Mason. This board this evening is considering amendments to Policy 7805 regarding the superintendent's evaluation. But the real issue is oversight. The board, this board, was expressly constituted by state law to make the superintendent accountable to voters. Yet Faust's contract was written and approved to limit oversight by the community by keeping the content of his evaluations relatively quiet. I haven't heard anything. Now, the current board wants to further limit its own ability to hold the superintendent to account. We spend roughly 50% of our budget on schools. The superintendent has the sole responsibility for the education of our children, our future. So why do we keep taking steps to make the most powerful position in our county less accountable? And what's the consequence? Well, if you're the Wilsons and you found out that your child has put in, been put in seclusion rooms for countless hours as a disciplinary measure, you might want to know if this egregious violation of your child's rights or county policy came up at all during the evaluation. New York State prisons banned seclusion because it was deemed to be a form of torture. Surely, the wholesale abuse of this barbaric practice in our schools should be a matter for public scrutiny. The Wilson case involves violation of policy, failure to discipline guilty parties, and false reporting, all of which are fireable offenses for everyone involved. Faust's contract does not trump state law, which gives this community the right to oversight. We need to make sure no contract is ever written like this again.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Matt Rhodes.
Thank you for letting me speak. I want to talk a little bit about school safety as we approach the upcoming school year, but from a standpoint of truancy. I've got children in the school system. My son just graduated from Hoggard. Very proud of him. My daughter is going to be going into eighth grade. And when I would drop them off to school, a lot of times I would stop somewhere and get a cup of coffee and the, you know, people working there know I have children. They say, where are your kids? I say, they better be in school. Because that's where I left them. So what I've seen a lot of is that kids that are walking to school or being driven to school, they get dropped off near school and they they appear to be going towards the woods anywhere but school. So that's concerning for me. There's not a lot the school system can do if they don't come in the door. And I know they get 10 excused absences. But I want parents to be aware and children to be aware that, you know, every year, we have close to 840,000 children are abducted. FBI says every 40 seconds, a child is abducted. So these kids could be putting their lives in danger. But also too, I know that some of these students who have told me and their parents have told me as well, that a lot of times they will come home in the middle of the day. Maybe they forgot something. Maybe they want to eat lunch at home or use the restroom, and then they go back. And the parents say, well, how did you leave school? Did you check out? No, I just went through a door and left. Well, how do you go back? Do you go to the front office? No, one of my friends leaves the door open or is waiting for me. So those are security issues that I hope that we'll be aware of and that we'll deal with because it's very important. And kids being in school is where they need to be. And the reality is, is that if they're not, they could be at the wrong place at the wrong time, and I do not want to see anyone's child hurt or injured. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Rocky Jeter Webb.
Why are pornographic and sex books being allowed in our public schools? What person or what people approve of this material to be put into our public schools? We think exposing our children to this material is a good idea. Okay, first it was books, then across other states they have what's called, and in some public libraries, they have what's called Drag and Story Hour. I mean, what's, I mean, what's next? Are they going to invite strippers to our public school, schools and set up pools and have them demonstrate in front of our children? I mean, that's completely outrageous. I came across a particular book in my alma mater and it reads this. "Take her out back, we boys figure, that in hand on titties. Put it in her coin box, put it in her corn hook, grab a hold of that braid, rub that calico." That can be found on page 39 of the book called Out of Darkness. That can be found in my alma mater, New Hanover High School. Long story short, the book is about anal sex. I do not want our children reading about anal sex. Sex, I want you to focus on education. I want you to focus on reading, writing, English, math, science, arithmetic. This is completely outrageous. These books have to go. And for those of you who want to know where these books can be found, you can look on pavementeducation.com where you can look up the book, where these books are in our, across our county, in our public schools. So who are the people that approve this material to be read? Because this is completely unacceptable. Sneaking these books in without without parental knowledge or taxpayers' knowledge? This needs to change. We will find out who approved this material and we will get you out. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter Webb. Pat Bradford.
The second book in the list of books that Sheriff Ed McMahon sent to the district attorney to evaluate was called Out of Darkness by Ashley Perez. This book is found at Holly Shelter Middle, Ashley High, and New Hanover High School. Three excerpts that I have for you tonight can be found at pavementeducationproject.com. Pavementeducationproject.com. Page 33 tells the story of Miranda, and it says, "None of us like Miranda. All of us pretend to." The text goes on to explain that Miranda is Latino. On page 67, "She was there when Henry came into the bathroom and closed the door behind him. She watched as he placed both hands on the wall beneath the mirror and pressed his forehead against the glass. A moment later, one of his hands slid into his pajamas." Page 68, "Shh! He took, he took one of her hands in his and squeezed it. Come over here. He pulled her to her feet close to him. He shifted his pajamas, and then the part of him that made him a man stuck out, reddish-purple and frightening. She had never seen one before except on a baby. This was different." Page 380, "Lie back. Open your legs. Stop crying. Don't try to tell me this is the first time you've done this, Henry said. Henry, she protested. I haven't. I never. You've lied already enough, he said. Then he pushed her back until her head was on the ground. Beto, you come here. Watch, but don't try anything. I've got the gun right here. Beto looked long enough to see the revolver his father held near his sister's face and the shotgun, and I won't continue." Besides the rape, the book ends in murder. This board has the ability to take this school, this book out of our schools.
Ms. Bradford, your time is up. Thank you.
You need to do it.
Okay. So thank you all for your, for your input. Next up is closed session. So is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to the items that are listed on the screen for, to discuss personnel matters and Board of Education versus John Does 1 through 13? Motion to go into closed session? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Okay, we are in closed session.
Okay, we ready, folks? How much longer do you think we got, since we're staying on schedule here? We, well, we got way off schedule on that.
You did?
Yeah. Yeah, no, we, um, you're on the clock with your babysitter?
Well, we have time.
No, I'm teaching.
She doesn't charge nothing.
Right. Yeah. Well, we were supposed to be at seven fifty, we were supposed to be here. So, we're not too bad.
We will, we can, we're always free.
Let's go back.
Yeah. Consensus items are gonna take a minute. Okay, folks, are you ready? Q, are these yours? I don't know. I haven't touched it.
Yeah, I guess when I put them down, I just can't.
Okay. All righty, let's see. Oops, hold on, let me get my computer back up.
She ain't there.
Um, Anita, are we ready? Did you say yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so next on our agenda are the consensus items. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consensus items as presented.
Um, is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, those are approved with, um, Pete, I didn't hear you, did you say something?
No ma'am, no, I said aye.
You said aye, okay, approved five to zero. Okay, next up, under old business, um, local salary schedules for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, at your seat, um, you've got a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we'll go through, and you should also have, um, two different salary schedules. I've provided a draft of the new salary schedules that we'll, we'll just go over overview of those tonight. Um, but I wanted you to have a copy of the complete salary schedules in case you wanted to look at particular things, you'd have that document. And then you also have the one that we used for this past fiscal year that we're currently using to pay from, just if you wanted to compare the two, you have that.
Okay, so, for Mr. Wildebore, um, he will just be following along on what's on the screen.
Yes, ma'am.
Huh? It's in assembly, okay. So Pete, you may have to go back and forth.
Okay, so, um, first, I just wanted to start off by saying when we're, we go through the presentation, um, the salary schedules that we talk about are gonna be based on the state, um, budget bill that passed. Um, and that actually passed July eleventh, I think we discussed that last board meeting. Um, and so our recommendations for these salary schedules will be based on that state budget that passed, and also the conversations that we've had regarding, um, the board's budget initiatives, um, over the past several months. And, do I have the clicker open? Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your help. Um, so first, I just wanted to share that the, when the state passed, um, their budget, it was effective as of July first. So, we will certainly make our schedules also effective July first. And what will, what'll happen is, once these salary schedules are approved, and so if they're approved tonight, then we will go back and we will, um, include these raises or pay changes in, um, our employees' paychecks for this month. And then, of course, as I had mentioned before, it's retro or it's effective as of July first, so we've already paid that July check. So we'll, um, at the end of August, we'll also include that increase, um, for July that hasn't been paid yet. So they'll, um, get both those payments in their August checks. I did want to share, the state retirement, um, contribution, the employer paid, um, contribution in the state budget that passed was twenty-four point fifty percent. It was a little bit higher in our planning budget, we had estimated twenty-four point nineteen percent. So, there's just a small difference there that I'll bring a budget amendment back to you, um, for that small change. And the health insurance amount was the same as we had in our, um, planning budget, so we were good there. And so, we'll start with the, um, certified salary schedules. These salary schedules are actually, um, prepared by the state, so we all use the same certified salary schedules. And so we will just, um, use those salary schedules, um, as we're implementing the raises. And as you can see here, the teacher and instructional support personnel, um, the raise for them, the average for that scale increase was four point two percent. And that ranged from two point five percent to seven point two percent, depending on the years of experience. For New Hanover County schools, the average teacher salary is about fifty-one thousand now with these new scales. And beginning teacher pay is, it actually increased with these scales, it was thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, um, annually, and now it's up to thirty-seven thousand. The teacher, I'm sorry, the assistant principal salary schedule also increased four percent. And the, um, principal salary scale went up four percent as well. Just to share a little bit, just to refresh your memory about the principal salary scales in, in case you're not familiar, maybe you don't remember. Um, principal salary scales are actually based on, um, average daily membership at their school, and also their, um, growth, um, ba, is based on their growth data and, um, um...
Evas.
Evas, gosh, no, right, I just, it just left me. And their evos growth. Um, and so, something that's a little bit different this year, previously, um, when we had good, um, test data, we were looking at the best, um, two of the last three years. But you know, we've held principals harmless for the past two years, so the state's doing a reset on this. And so actually, when they're looking at principal salaries, when we get our test scores related to last year, we'll usually get those around December, January, I believe. Um, and so once we get that information, they're just gonna be looking at last year's test scores, um, to determine that growth piece of the principal pay. So that's, that's a little different than what we've done in the past. And so now, let's move on and talk about our, um, non-certified, sometimes we refer those as classifieds salary schedules. And so, these are really the schedules that we're bringing to you for your approval tonight. Um, and the reason we're approving these is, these are actually, the state gives us ranges, um, for these different pay types. And then each LEA has the flexibility to determine their own salary schedules. And so that's why we're bringing those for approval. Um, and of course, it, they're based on the state mandated increases. So even though they're our salary scales, we still have to give a four percent, excuse me, a four percent increase to our employees, and we still have to pay a minimum, um, hourly rate of pay of fifteen dollars an hour. So with that, certified, I'm sorry, um, central office administration salary schedule increase was, went up four percent. And the non-salary personnel, um, we had to, the state mandate was, like I had said before, the four percent or the fifteen dollar minimum pay. However, um, as a board, this was very important for us. So we, um, decided that we really wanted to do, um, we wanted to fix our salary scales, um, the compression that we had in those, um, s, non-certified salary scales. And so as a result of that, a lot of these, um, grades received more than the four percent that was required by the state. And so you can see that here, so grades fifty-five through sixty, looking at those grades, they actually received an average increase of about eleven percent, so that we were able to fix that compression for them. Um, and then grades sixty-one through seventy-eight, they, um, there wasn't, um, as much compression once we got that far down the chart, if you can envision kinda how the charts laid out. And so we were able to just give the four percent in that area and not, um, negatively impact the salary schedule. Bus drivers and bus aides, uh, average salary increase for them was six point three percent. That allowed us to, once again, fix the compression on that salary scale as well. And also put them on a thirty-year salary scale, they were on a fifteen-year before. Child nutrition, the same thing, we're able to fix the compression with that scale. And because they were, um, paid even lower than what the bus drivers were, that ended up being about a thirteen point seven percent increase for, for them, um, to get them to where they needed to be, and also to get rid of the compression that was on that scale for them. Okay. Do we wanna wait till the end or answer questions as we go?
Is this a, is this an intermediate stopping point, or should we just hang on?
Yeah. I mean, that's fine.
Okay. Ms. Justice, you have a question?
Yeah, the bus drivers, um, so at this point, we have bus drivers that are making, are making similar, are making at least fifteen dollars an hour along with the child nutrition workers that are i, in the cafeterias, correct?
So, bus drivers are making sixteen dollars an hour because they were already making fifteen.
Okay.
And we wanted them to be making more than the bus monitors, and we were required to pay them the fifteen. So, so they were, they're at sixteen.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify all that.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And if I could ask, before we jump off that, uh, slide, um, where exactly are TAs in this, um, in, in the, in the grades?
Um, and I actually have, um, if we go, if, we'll wait just a second, it's the slide after the next one, and then, and then we'll be able to see that.
And also, Mr. Wildebore, if you, um, there are two, um, documents in the supporting document column. If, the first one is under local salary schedule, which is a PowerPoint that, um, Ashley's doing now. If you click on the local salary schedule, you'll see the salary schedules, and I think there's, what, a fifty-eight?
Yeah, so teacher assistants are fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. And I, we do have some more information on that coming up. Before we get to that, I did want to share that we had some hourly rates of pay and some flat rates that we are also adjusting, that I wanted to make you aware of. And so, these are specifically relating to instructional substitutes. And so the, um, I don't see starred there, long-term licensed subs and TAs as subs or teachers. The state actually mandates that we base that rate of pay, that daily rate of pay, on beginning teacher pay. Um, and so we've done, we've made the adjustment here, and that increase is, of course, due to the fact that the beginning teacher pay went up. And then we adjusted the other rates accordingly, um, based on where they were in the previous year. So they got a, either a four percent, um, increase, or if, for example, um, there was, last year, between full-time unlicensed sub and full-time with experience in North Carolina or out-of-state license, there was a two-dollar difference into, between those two rates of pay, so we kept that same logic. Um, and so that's where the hourly rates came from at the bottom of that scale. Okay? And then on the next slide, we have, we're gonna talk about tutors and non-instructional substitutes. And, um, the same logic is used here as on the previous slide. So the certified tutor rate is based on beginning teacher pay. Um, it's just an hourly rate there. And then, um, if you look at the bottom of that scale, you know, we're, of course, as we talked about before, required to pay at least fifteen dollars an hour. And so we had to bump those rates up to fifteen. And then previously, bus driver sub was fifty cents more than, um, the bus aide sub. And so we kept that same logic as we were going through the scale. Okay? And then here, this is the slide that I thought would be helpful. So these are some of the areas that we had talked about previously, and I think I had this written down. So, bus drivers, so this is, um, we talked a lot about beginning pay for different areas. And so you have the salary schedules there that you can look to see where each of those different grades, what the starting point is for them. But I thought it was important to point out, so bus drivers, even though they start at sixteen dollars an hour, if we look at years of experience for our bus drivers in New Hanover County schools, um, they average at about, um, a step fifteen, so a step fifteen on that new salary scale is seventeen dollars ninety-four cents. And then this is the same thing for child nutrition, um, based on years of experience in, of our staff in New Hanover County schools, most of our staff fall around step fifteen. Um, as, as far as our hourly child nutrition staff, and so that, um, hourly rate of pay is fifteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Teacher assistants, the average years of experience here is, um, nine years. That's a grade fifty-seven, and so that, on average, our teacher assistants are gonna be at sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. And custodians, on average, are gonna be at sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, their average years of experience is about eight. So they're on step eight. I also thought it would be helpful to talk about bonuses, so, um, you, we've already talked about these, and you've approved the ESAR bonuses, but I felt like it was important to go through this. And just in case you hear things about this, so in the state budget, they also approved, um, to reinstate the performance bonus for grades three through eight, math and reading. Um, and that'll be based on last year's test results. And they're gonna continue the bonuses that they've been paying over the past several years for CTE and, um, APIB and, um, AICE. For principal bonuses, they didn't pay those last year, but those are gonna be coming back for this upcoming year. Once we get, um, the test results for last year, principals will be eligible, um, depending on what their scores look like, to be, receive that bonus again. And then this is, um, something we have talked about previously, using ESAR funds to pay a non-certified bonus. And so we are still planning to go forward with that and building that into our ESAR plan that will be coming back to you for approval. But, um, as part of that plan, that bonus is gonna go to employees with standard hours of thirty hours or more a week. Um, they're gonna be permanent, um, employees. The retention bonus is gonna be the thousand dollars that we talked about, and we plan to pay that five hundred in, on November thirtieth, and that's gonna be based on people employed as of November first. And then pay the other five hundred June thirtieth, and that'll be based on employees employed as of June first. And that is all I have for you tonight, and so I just request approval of the local salary scales as presented.
Um, is there a motion to approve the salary schedules as presented?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay, any more discussion or any more questions? Ms. Justice?
I'm just, I just looked at this, a teacher's assistant with nine years of experience, makes sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents, it's not your fault, that's for sure. So don't think I'm accusing you, I'm just saying this whole situation is sad. The county just gave their employees a sixteen eighty-five minimum. Uh, this is so sad, this is just sad. I, this is wrong, but...
Is there a question?
Well, my discussion is that I, 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 I know how I feel about it, and you know how I feel about it. I haven't changed it, and I wish the county would change it. I know the state's already given us money, so it's their turn. And they got it.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Adams?
Just a quick comment, thank you, Ms. Sutton, for all that you've done on this. This has been a long process, and you've been amazing, your finance team has been amazing. Thank you, Dr. Faust, for guiding this as well. Thank you.
Yeah.
But you still have to come up once in a while and speak, just so you can forget.
I'm looking forward to a little break.
Okay, um, all in favor of the, um, accepting the salary schedule as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Wildebore?
I guess I, I, aye, aye, aye. Yeah, I gotta echo some of the thoughts that, you know, this is a shame. I, you know, I've been fighting so hard for that. You know, but I guess we have to do what we can do, at least we'll give them something, so aye.
Okay, so that passes five to one.
No, well, I didn't vote.
I thought I heard your voice, okay.
No.
Ms. Billy, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Woldo Bor?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes five to one. I mean, I'm sorry, four to one.
Four to one.
Yes. Okay, so before we move on to the next item, I need to apologize. I, in my haste to get rolling, I skipped over approval of the amendments. And so could we go back to item 13? And is there a motion to approve the amendments as presented?
No.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? So, Ms. Billy, I did have a question for you. On the June the 7th minutes, when we talked about the year-round discussion calendar, we, it has everybody down as vote not recorded. Okay, thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Mr. Woldo Bor?
I'm muted, I'm sorry. I was muted, aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so I do want to just circle back for one second too, to the, the consensus items. I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge and thank and express my sincere appreciation on behalf of the Board of Education to all of the organizations who partner with New Hanover County schools to enrich and enhance the educational experience of our students and our staff. So that they get the richest and most robust learning opportunities that they can. So for any partners that are listening and any folks that work with these partners, please relay that to them for us. Okay, now, back on track, old business we just finished, new business, policies for first reading. So I will be taking those on behalf of Mr. Boyer. The policies for first reading, we really don't do anything with. Policy code 1725-4035-7236R is a new policy for us. But basically, all it's doing is just pulling out definitions, which we had never done before. So the NCSBA recommended that we have a second policy for that. And then policy 7805 was the superintendent evaluation. So those are, those are just for first reading. So they're really not discussion items at this time unless we needed to add something, yes?
If I could, I just had a question.
Hang on, Ms. Justice.
I would like to do.
Ms. Justice?
Excuse me, let him go ahead and go first, he's on the policy committee.
Yeah, I just had a question because we have two different versions of the superintendent evaluation here.
And the only reason that they are both there is one is show, the one was really hard to read because it was so marked up. And so they're both really the same thing. The, the one policy that has all the red, it was where we struck out and put back in, that, the one, the one that we're approving is the one that is, they're both the same, actually.
Okay, and that is the entire thing from the, from the.
NCSBA, yes. It's, it's the wording that we got from them that the majority of school boards across the state are using.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clarified, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Pete.
Okay, there's two things. First of all, I'd like to ask, Mr. Shive, sorry. Now, this evaluation, 7805, that is our current policy for the board, correct?
I don't think there's currently a superintendent evaluation policy in place.
We had, we voted.
When it's 1820 or 1840, from the old policy.
So it's still, so it's still in place if it's the old policy manual, correct?
If the board hasn't acted to revoke it, then yes.
Okay, so it is. So I want to make that clear, 7805 is in place.
No.
No, it is not.
Why not?
It's the, the version that was in the previous policy manual, that's now obsolete. Since the board hasn't acted to remove it, that's the one that's currently in place until the board adopts the 7805.
Well, I'm confused.
We've been through 7805 like three times and it keeps getting sent back. This is the policy that we want to put in. This is the only policy we have left that has not been approved.
So what is our, what is our superintendent's evaluation policy presently that we are using?
The only policy that is currently in place is from the old obsolete policy manual. And the board hasn't revoked that prior policy, so technically it's still in place. This, this policy would replace that policy when adopted.
Because this, this was, this was adopted, according to this.
It says adopted blank. There is no, there's, it has not been adopted.
I remember voting on this.
Because we didn't. It has not been adopted. This is a brand-new policy, that's why it's on for first reading.
So we have two of them?
No, one is just a cleaned-up versions for, make it for easier reading.
And one without any red.
One without any red is what we're doing.
Results of removing all the red.
And that's what you had just told Pete, was what the reason was, was to clear it up?
Yes, and that reason remains the same.
Okay, I would like to go ahead and clarify something too with Mr. Shive. I do know that we did talk about this policy. And we, as a board, voted on it at the time that we were going to use the superintendent's state evaluation. That was a vote up here on the dais. So what does that mean as far as that is at this point, until, I guess, we adopt this, which is what we're looking at? Since we did a vote on that, does that mean that's the one we should be using, according to what we did?
Yes, so the board, so the board actually doesn't even have to have a superintendent evaluation policy. There's no requirement that it have such a policy. And so the board chose, in the absence of having this policy previously, to vote to use a certain tool. And even with this new policy, it can still do that. So this, this policy, in the first paragraph, says, the board shall annually evaluate the superintendent. The board may use the evaluation process and guidelines established by the State Board of Education, including the rubric for evaluating North Carolina superintendents or such other processes and evaluation tools as the board chooses. So moving forward with the adoption of this policy, the board can continue to use the State Board of Education rubric or another rubric or document if it so chooses.
Okay, does the previous, and I don't have it popped up right now because of the confusion, does the, does the previous superintendent's evaluation that we're using before these, does that say anything about the North Carolina state? It doesn't. Okay, but I do know that we, as a group up here, voted to use that.
We voted to use the, the old instrument. That's the only thing we voted on.
That's.
That is what, that is.
We did go through all that training for that.
We voted, well, the vote that you're speaking of is when we voted to adopt the new tool for this year.
Yeah.
So that was the vote, but that, the policy is about the process. So that's the difference.
So we did vote, we did vote to use that tool this year.
To use the tool for this, for 20, for 22, 23.
Thank you, that's what I've been trying to clear up for every time I ask this question. Because I remember the vote. And I'm glad that you've got the historical knowledge. Because we don't have policies in place right now to straighten things up that's aligned to what our voting was. So for this year, we did vote to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so those are policies for first reading. They will be back on the agenda next, next month. All right, next up are the Title IX policies. And basically, there were very few changes in, in what, we're still using the NCSBA structure. And when we adopted these policies back in October of 2020 and then revisited and revised it in February of 21, we had opted to, to leave out the informal grievance process. Because we were still getting our training together. We were still grappling with making sure that everybody knew how to follow the formal grievance process. So the only thing that has changed with these two, with these two policies is the insertion of the informal grievance process. Which, and then so Jarell will be developing, in conjunction with his team, what the informal grievance process looks like. And, and then training will ensue. So that's what those two policy changes are all about. Not, and, and the wording is straight from NCSBA and is from the federal government. Yes, Ms. Justice?
All right. And this is first reading, correct?
No, these are, these are, we're adopting. These are already in place, and so we don't have to do first and second reading. We, we just read them and we vote.
You're talking about the Title IX one?
The, the new Title IX ones, yes. I mean, the old Title IX ones. The Title IX policy 1725-4035-7236, sexual harassment prohibited contact and reporting process. And policy 1726-4036-7237, Title IX sexual harassment grievance process.
Did we have a first reading on this?
Judy, we adopted these back in October of 2020. And then we revised them in February of 2021. So we have already voted on them. We are using them actively right now in our district.
Including the informal district, the informal?
No, we are adding in the informal process.
So you're adding that in tonight for the first time? You want us to vote on it? There's no first reading on that part?
No, that, that's not how the review process works. Once it's a policy, you don't have to do first reading.
Okay, so this is the first I have heard of this, except I think it's been under discussion from the public for the last 24 hours or so. And here's my concern. I would like to see what the process is that Jarell is going to come up with before he even trains anybody. So we can approve that. Because with our history and what we have been through, I do not want to have the question of public in any way, shape, or form question what we're doing. It's not going to be any better because we've got a heck of a lot in the future that's going to be involved with the sexual assaults that went on for decades here, allegedly. And so unless we can help the public trust us, and I think if he would present to us first what his investigative process is before he does the training, and then we could vote on it, then the public would feel better about what we're doing.
Well, Judy, the, the board does not approve procedures. That is what the superintendent and his staff do. We approve the policies and they enact them into place. So we don't approve those procedures.
Normally you don't, but the board can do it, well, Mr. Shive.
Mr. Shive, what?
Can, should, can the board approve procedures? I, you know, instead of them automatically happening, I would like to see the public know that we know what they are and that we approve them. Believe me, this history in this district is still here. And we've got, as I said, there's a lot facing us in the future. And I want the public to trust us as much as possible. They would probably like to hear what these investigative policies are, how they're going to be gone through, considering what didn't take place for decades, allegedly.
And if I, if I could add something.
Pete Woldo Bor, Pete, 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 Pete.
Don't yell at him like that.
It's Mr. Shive is talking.
But don't yell at people.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
All right, yeah, hang on, I'll call on you. Go ahead, Colin.
So I'm, I'm reading this policy for the first time. And I defer to Mr. Lewis about the particulars. But I believe that an informal process requires voluntary written consent of both the parties. So it's not something that would be forced on anyone.
Right.
And so it's not, if there's a concern about the district using informal resolution process, that's, that's only going to be available or would only be utilized if both parties agree to that in writing.
And it can also be rescinded if they change their mind before the investigation is complete, is that right? That's what Jarell told us at the policy committee.
Okay. I defer to.
All right, Mr. Woldo Bor?
Okay, thank you. And I was going to mention that I had been made aware of a situation at one of the schools that it drug on for months after months after months. And the, the complainant was, was around, around the other, the other child. And it was very concerning to me and also to the person. So I think this actually addresses that, where it can be, instead of it, you know, ongoing situation that takes months after months after months, it is a situation that it can be taken care of a little bit quicker. And again, it does have this stipulation that both parties have to agree to it. So I, I think it is, it's got some merit to it, for sure.
Mr. Lewis, are you online, are you on the Zoom call with us?
Yes, I am.
Would you care to please weigh in this? Obviously, I'm not doing a good job of describing what we talked about at the policy committee meeting. So if you would just weigh in on this, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, so I, I think to understand the informal resolution process, I need to discuss what the formal process is. So for a Title IX investigation to begin for sexual misconduct, the first has to be a formal complaint filed. A formal complaint can be filed by a complainant or a victim. Or in certain circumstances, I, as a Town Line Coordinator, can decide to file a formal complaint. If a formal complaint is filed, what happens next? We begin a Town Line Investigation Process that can take up to, up to 120 days, as Mr. Woldo Bor acknowledged. Some of these can be pretty lengthy, depending on how many witnesses we have. If there are, you know, students with disabilities, students or families that don't speak English as their first language, to slow things down. So with the formal process, we investigate and we determine if there is a violation of the Title IX policy based on the facts that we find. Under the informal resolution, that would allow us to have a wider base and range of options to resolve Title IX complaints. The way to enter into the formal complaint, the informal resolution process, is the first still has to be a filing of a formal complaint by a victim or the Title IX Coordinator. From there, the parties would be presented with their rights under the informal resolution process, such as voluntary written consent before it's being entered by all parties involved. At any time during the informal resolution process, a party can withdraw from the informal resolution process and then enter into the formal investigation process if they are no longer comfortable in the informal resolution process or if something does not work as they thought it should. So, and at the end, essentially, the informal resolution process allows for the parties to have more say, more of a, better grasp on how this particular situation impacts them directly and better fits to their needs, while also providing a quicker resolution than the formal process. Also, the informal resolution process cannot be implemented or utilized for cases of a student making a sexual misconduct complaint against an employee. So it can be used on employee, on employee cases, student on student cases, but it can never be used for cases involving a student and an employee.
And also, Mr. Lewis, will, will you still, you still have oversight over all of the, all of the complaints, no matter what resolution process is used, is that correct?
Correct, so my role would be to ensure that all of these cases are carried out following federal policy, federal law regulations. So I would still be hands-on in this process, formal or informal.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Justice has a question?
Well, thank you for that. And this is what I want to do, is have the public understand what we're doing so there's no confusion as, as far as the process. Now, are the parents from the very first time that the child approaches an adult, are the parents notified about what's going on so that the child is not just left to their own devices to do this until maybe the end of the day or the next day? Or is the parent notified immediately about what's going on?
Yeah, so the parent is notified as part of the standard Title IX process. So like I said, once we get that formal complaint, we have to do a follow-up, what we call the interactive process, where we talk about the rights. And that's where we would offer the opportunity for the parties to utilize the informal resolution process with the caveat that all parties, the respondent and the victim must both agree to enter into the formal resolution process. So at that, at that first meeting with the family, we talk about the rights that all students and the families have, they would have all that information beforehand so they can make an informed decision about what works best for their particular case.
So, so no questioning, no versions, no discussion with the child will occur until the parent is there, present, and you give them their rights and so that everybody will know exactly what's going on. And the child's not alone, so there's no way in shape they're going to feel intimidated or alone? Feel like they have to please the adult?
That is part of the, that is part of the Title IX interactive process. This informal resolution would not change that interactive process.
So, in other words, a parent will be there from yet-go, very first?
A parent or an advisor or caregiver would be involved.
Okay, the legal, whoever's considering the guarding of the child will know immediately before they question the child to, I mean, that, that's another concern of the public, is that children not have an adult representation. And children do have a tendency to want to please adults who are around, that's just kids. And so a lot of the public is concerned that the child will not have that immediately upon making the complaint or even the child accused. So that both of the parents or guardians, they could be guardians, are notified immediately before anything's done.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to, do we, do we want to approve the? Okay, so is there a motion to, do we want to approve these one at a time, or do we want to do them together as a unit? Because they both, they're both have insertion of the same words.
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to Title IX policies together.
Okay, is there a second?
Uh, what?
Is there a second?
You're talking about these policies in front of us now?
Yes, all right, I'll second it. Any more discussion?
Oh.
Okay, Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Woldenbor.
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Okay, that's five to zero. Thank you. Okay, so next up is policy, amendment to policy twenty-six sixty. And so that, this one falls into some of the discussion that we had earlier today, board appointments to outside committees. The major, there is one major change there. The Hannah Block Historic USO Building Community Arts Center Committee, it was disbanded, so we're taking that out of our policy, and that is really the only change on that one.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Second, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next one up is policy twenty-six seventy, also going along with our board committees, the Business Advisory Council. And so what we have done with that one is inserted CTE, or we'll probably spell out Career and Technical Business Advisory Council. Some of the wording in there has changed. We've gone from nine members to eleven members, and inserted that a Board of Education member will be a member of that council, New Henry County Schools, Career and Technical, and that, including a Wilmington Chamber of Commerce designee. But none of, none of the, and I, I forget why these, these highlights are in there. They don't mean anything to that note. I was, it was a note to myself to, to ask a question. So, yeah, so that is, those are the changes for that, and then they will be referenced in the board committees. Is there a motion to accept this one as presented?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay. All, any more discussion?
Yeah, this is the one that you said previously was the, was the CTEC Advisory Board.
This was not, this was not originally CTEC. CTEC Advisory Board will be absorbed into this.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify how that works.
They were not being left out. They're just going to be absorbed.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great, that one passes. All right, so going on down, okay, let's see, we'll go to announcements. Unless anybody has a committee report, I didn't, no one told me that they did. The policy committee will meet on Tuesday, August the ninth at 9:00 a.m. at the Board of Education Center, and the August interim meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, August 16th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. So next on our agenda is the second closed session. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the items listed on the page?
Motion to go into closed session?
Is there a second? Second, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in closed session.
One more of them out here we can adjourn. Just one more body so we can adjourn. Yeah, we don't even have an advice chair, so I don't know what's in there.
Okay, next on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Crystal, where did you stick in the thumb drive?